Podium mic check, one, two, three. Podium mic check, one, two, three.
Yeah. I need to know if you guys...
I know. No, he's in the 99th percentile.
Manager, mic check, one, two, three. Manager, mic testing, one, two, three.
I bet you do. It's a lot of extra to carry, yes.
County clerk, mic check, one, two, three. County clerk testing, one, two, three.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, I'll do.
Attorney, mic testing, one, two, three. Attorney, mic check, one, two, three. Meitzner, mic check, one, two, three. Meitzner, mic testing, one, two, three. Beatty, mic. Beatty, mic check, one, two, three. Beatty, mic testing, one, two, three. Lopez, mic testing, one, two, three. Lopez, mic check, one, two, three. Howe, mic check, one, two, three. Howe, mic check, one, two, three.
Yes.
All right. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. We're going to be starting in about two minutes, so stand by. Okay, stand by. Here we go. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Well, good morning and welcome to Central County Government. Those that are joining in person, those that are online, and those on our television partner, KPTS, we're glad you're joining us this morning. We also like to give special welcomes to electeds that are here. I see Andre Cisco from the Oklaun improvement district elected is here visiting this morning, so welcome. We're glad you're joining us. And all of you, we're glad that you're here. So if you look through the... If you walked in this morning, you would have got a meeting agenda. We've got a lot on the agenda today, and you'll notice after we do four proclamations, we're going to take about a 10-minute break, and then we're going to walk outside so we can take some pictures. We want to make sure that we're celebrating this day with you and we're honoring this day, so we're going to be able to take some pictures together. So before... After item F, and before we get into the next item G of appointments, we're going to take just a quick 10-minute break. Also, if you're curious, you can always go to centralcounty.org, and you can get all the supporting documents that we're reviewing. You can have access to that as well. Very, very important. So, that being said, you'll also notice we're down a man today. Commissioner Dennis, at the urging of a lot of people, urged him to go and take the Kansas Honor Flight. The Honor Flight is an organization that takes veterans to Washington DC to see the Vietnam memorials, World War II memorials, Korean War memorials, and he has been urged by a lot of people for a long time to take one of these flights. He had a long distinguished career in military service, and he finally accepted. So he is not with us this morning. He's in DC at an honor flight. So wanted to make sure that people knew that he wasn't sleeping in, he wasn't tardy, that he was... He's on some official business, and we're hoping that he's enjoying... He deserves that, that honor flight. So we're glad that he's able to take that today. So, with that being said, I want to officially call the meeting of Wednesday, May 1st, 2024, to order. Madam Clerk, let's get to work. First item, please.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Droplin Emerson with the Well Worship Center. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Father, this morning, we're grateful. We take just a moment to pause and thank you for this community. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of it. Lord, we acknowledge our need for you in keeping our community great. Lord, we thank you for our elected officials. God, we thank you for those that are willing to step into these roles and acknowledge that the decisions that are made often impact not only us, but our children and our grandchildren. And so we pray, God, you'd give great wisdom to those making decisions. Father, bless this meeting, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thanks for joining us this morning. We appreciate your prayer. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Present.
Next item, please.
County announcements.
Hello, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Each May is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month to focus on reducing the stigma surrounding behavioral health issues, as well as highlighting the ways mental illness and addiction can affect all of us. Depression is one of the most common mental illnesses, affecting more than 8%, which is about 21 million of American adults each year. Calm Care put together a short video to explain the signs and symptoms of depression and ways to get help. And after that, Joan Tammany, Executive Director of Calm Care, is here to make a few remarks. Take two. Take three. We just wanted to make sure you guys were all paying attention this morning.
Everybody's paying attention. Yeah, we're good.
depression is something that all of us feel at some point in our life. It's okay to feel this way when we experience a significant loss or have a major life change. For some, these feelings can become too much and begin to impact day-to-day life. In fact, about 10% of the population experiences depression every year, and about 30% of adults will experience depression at some point in their life. Some symptoms of clinical depression are feeling sad, more often than not, for at least two weeks, withdrawing from activities that one usually loves, and having changes in sleep, appetite, and mood. Some people with depression have a hard time concentrating, are irritable, or may experience thoughts of death, dying, or suicide. It's important to know that these feelings won't last forever, and that help is available. Treatment for depression might include talk therapy. It can also include medication, case management, and crisis support. If you or someone you know is experiencing depression, call Calm Care at 316-660-9600. Your primary care doctor, another mental health provider, or for immediate help, call 988.
Very good. Good morning, Joan.
Hey, good morning. Joan Tammany, Executive Director with Calm Care. Just a reminder, we created this series of mental health-related videos with help from a grant from KU School of Medicine through their Facts Not Fear program. We're really pleased with that. That was Martin Rose. He's one of our children's integrated care specialists. It was really important to us as we approached these videos to highlight and showcase the staff that are providing direct services. But it is Mental Health Awareness Month. It starts today. It's nice to be here on day one of that event. It's more than just an observance. It's a time for all of us to raise our voice, to make a difference, and to encourage people to seek help. The reality is that one in five American adults experience a mental illness each year, and that number is significantly higher for youth. In addition to that, it's often an 11-year gap from time of onset for a mental illness to the time somebody seeks treatment, and that most major mental illnesses initiate before the age of 14, and 75% by the age of 24. So the earlier we get folks' access to services, the better. So May, being Mental Health Awareness Month, is our time to continue to break the myth that mental illness is something that should be kept below ground and not talked about. It's really important that we promote the importance of getting help and acknowledging when somebody needs help. We all need it from time to time. Today, on the agenda, consent, you have R0 Reasons Why Contract Renewal. That's a really important campaign for us because it's focused on educating youth around suicide prevention and how to access help. But I'm just here to make sure that I raise my voice and adamant advocate for mental health during Mental Health and Mariners Month. And I want to make sure to do a shout-out because we have a large workforce here at Calm Care that works very hard every day, working directly and indirectly with those that need services for behavioral health issues, and they do a tremendous job, and the work is complex and difficult. So thank you to all of Calm Care.
Joan, thank you. And part of the process in Mental Health Awareness Month, when we raise awareness, we lower the stigma.
Yep.
So people feel more acceptable into coming into the light and to try to seek help. Since we have you, and this is a little bit off the cuff, but you're pretty versed in these topics. So we are... We're going to be celebrating the groundbreaking of the Biomed Campus next week. Adjacent to the Biomed Campus, we are going to be building out a brand-new Calm Care Crisis Center. Can you tell us a little bit what this Calm Care Crisis Center is going to be doing and why it's unique compared to the one we have now?
Yeah. And just for the public, that groundbreaking, I believe, is on the 8th of May. Yeah, we are literally on the corner of the Biomed Campus, and we made an intentional effort to be part of that because all of our psychiatrists are graduates of KU School of Medicine. We work very closely with them on a variety of community projects. Our opportunity to increase the interface between our clinic and their clinic is greatly enhanced by being strategically located. They're going to have an outpatient clinic just across the parking lot to serve folks, and I anticipate that the importance of making sure that new med students get strong education on mental health, and we're hoping that we could have an impact on being part of that curriculum to some degree as we move forward. So we're real excited about that. But the importance of the Community Crisis Center, the question you asked, is our opportunity to really have a new and visible presence in the community so that people know that that's accessible for all. It's going to provide a more comfortable environment to get that help, and it's going to expand the opportunity for us to have additional observation beds and longer-term stabilization beds so that people who are struggling have a safe place to stay.
Well, we're grateful for your leadership, and talking about Calm Care crisis expansion for a few years, so we're right on the cuff of that, and I'm really excited to...
And I think the other key thing is, you know, the architects we're working with are building the Biomed Clinic, so the whole effort to make it kind of a beautiful, continuous campus is really important, but boy, the designs that are coming out are pretty exciting.
They really are. They're impressive. So we're excited, and we're excited that you're here this morning, Joan.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. One quick plug is May 9th is National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and Calm Care is also having a Children's Mental Health Day at Osage Park. Again, this is happening on May 4th, but it's 1:00 to 3:00, and you can bring your kids out. There's face painting, mascots, and a bunch of fun activities to do. Again, that is May 4th at Osage Park. Okay, next up... Okay. Next up on the agenda is for county good news. Monica Sissel, she's the Deputy Director of Department of Aging Disabilities, is here to share about the 2024 Byron G. Stout, the Fourth Spotlight on Wellness Award. Monica?
Hey, good morning, Monica.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. We are so happy to be here today. In 2024, Monica Sissel, Sedgwick County Department of Aging and Disabilities, Deputy Director. 2024 is the ninth year Mayor Trust has honored a wellness advocate in the community through their Wellness Spotlight on Wellness Award. Mayor Trust presents the award each year in memory of Byron G. Stout IV, a Mayor Trust Vice President of Human Resources who passed away in 2015. He was passionate about wellness within the workplace and also within the community. This award presented to Sedgwick County Department on Aging and Disabilities, Diabetes Education, and Wellness Coordinator, Joe Sammoniego, sorry, on April 11th at the Working Wall Conference. It's because of Joe's positive influence and evidence-based lifestyle change programs, including our Diabetes Prevention Program and the Enhanced Fitness Exercise Program, that he's been named Mayor Trust Credit Union's 2024 Byron G. Stout Spotlight on Wellness Champion. Joe has worked to develop our Sedgwick County Department of Aging and Disabilities and Central Plains Area Agency on Aging's Wellness Program within our agency since he started in 2020. He's built it from the ground up. He provides several evidence-based exercise classes, health and wellness resources, helps older adults with good food choices, improves strength, cardiovascular endurance, balance, and more. This wellness program reaches older adults in Sedgwick, Harvey, and Butler Counties. We are very proud of the work he does and the positive influence he has on hundreds of older adults in these communities. He promotes and inspires healthy habits and physical activity. So we are thrilled to have him here today and to present him and congratulate him on his award.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Joe. Anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. This is an awesome opportunity, and it's an honor. And, you know, I always say and brag about it, and I mean it truly, but I do have the best job. So I'm sorry.
That's great. Well, congratulations again. Thank you so much for what you do for the aging community and Sedgwick County and Lawrence. So thank you.
For the opportunity.
Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Nicole? Seeing none. Thank you. Appreciate the updates. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Okay, we had a few people sign up for Public Agenda. One for the zoning item, so we'll wait until that item comes, and we'll call you then. We also have one for one of the proclamations. If it's okay, we'll wait and when we do that proclamation. And then two other individuals to discuss senior centers. So first on the list, Andre Cisco, the aforementioned. You just say your name and address. Our clerk will give you five minutes. Good morning.
Hello, Chairman Beatty and County Commissioners. My name is Andre Simonson Cisco, and I live at 5015 Jade in Wichita, Kansas. I am here on behalf of seniors speaking up for senior centers. I have been here a few times already, seeking funding and information for senior centers inside Sedgwick County. While Oaklawn Senior Center is partly funded by the county, Oaklawn Improvement District funds the rest. Our general fund money is generated from property taxes in the Oaklawn area. The district receives no other funding or tax money from anyone else. Researching the other cities' budgets has given me information that they receive money from several other outside sources. Chaney receives a local liquor tax, a local sales tax, a mineral production tax. The city gives their center $7,000 to help fund their center, and the county gives $5,000. Bel Air receives county sales tax money and rental income, as well as the state of Kansas gas tax. The city does not give anything to their center, and they receive $18,000 from the county. Clearwater receives funding, franchise tax, and only receive $18,000 from the county. Of that $18,000, $8,590 goes toward reimbursements of classes they provide. Wichita Centers, Linwood, La Familia Orchard Park Northeast, receive $57,000 from the county, and the downtown center receives $80,000. The city of Wichita receives property tax, a local sales tax, franchise tax, motor vehicle tax, a motor fuel tax, a special assessments tax, but they do not give anything to their senior centers for funding. While listening to the county commissioners meeting this month, counties were talking about how the state flatlined the attorney fees and the cost, yet the senior centers have been flatlined on their budget since 2018. When requesting more funding each year, the centers are required to tie these funds to new programs or new activities, and inflation cannot enter in to the request of funding. County receives their budget to recommend flatlining. The county increases their budget to accommodate for inflation that has happened over the past 12 months, where senior centers cannot. The commissioners of Sedgwick County need to support the centers. Each center is different and meets different goals and needs. Seniors need a place to go and feel they are comfortable, somewhere to look forward to going to. Park City has two special alcohol taxes, a local sales tax, a franchise tax. The city gives their center, which is double as, doubles as a community center, $145,863, and the county gives $35,000. Mount Hope only gets local sales tax, late fee charges, and a township payment. The city gives them nothing for their senior centers in the $18,000 from the county. Derby has a special parks tax, a recreation tax, a special drug and alcohol tax, an aquatic tax, a senior service advisory board tax, fireworks stand permits, transit guest tax, a different sales tax, and the Derby flight additional tax. The city gives their senior center $175,000, and the county gives $115,000. Moven gets a local sales tax, a transit guest tax, 1% sales tax, special alcohol tax, as well as funds from special parks and recreation. They receive $35,000 from Sedgwick County and $135,000 from the city to run their operation. Hayesville receives a mineral production tax, a special alcohol tax, a local sales tax, a compensation use tax, a franchise tax, and a transit guest tax. They give their center $155,845 and gets $35 from the county, too. Thank you for any support that you can give to the senior centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cisco. Any questions or comments? I might add that Ms. Cisco submitted a letter to each commissioner that I'll make sure that you have clerk to submit with the public comment. You have a copy. Okay, very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Next, Lynn Wassinger. Good morning, Lynn. If you can state your name and address for the record. Clerk will give you five minutes.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Wassinger. I live at 1560 North Sedgwick. I am a member of the Oaklawn Senior Center. I wish to speak to you today in regards to the needs of senior citizens in Sedgwick County, especially those who can't afford to live in very nice, expensive communities with built-in entertainment amenities and amenities. It's for the citizens who can't be here today and quite often are limited to how and far they can go that I am here today. The senior centers are quite often the lifeline to seniors from isolation. The funding of these centers is critical and crucial to the effective operation of providing services to us, the senior citizens of Sedgwick County, those of us who have lived in, worked in, and supported Sedgwick County for many years. We appreciate the fact that most Sedgwick County senior centers do not charge membership fees to go to them to participate in activities, take educational classes, or just socialize at these centers, since our segment of the population, in most cases, can least afford membership fees. Social isolation is a major concern for senior citizens, and Sedgwick County senior centers provide an opportunity for somewhere to go and interact with other people. As a financial counselor, or I should say, a former financial counselor, I understand the need to balance your budget, but I would ask you to please not put the needs of this segment of our society at the bottom of the distribution pole. Please let the, your funding reflect how you still value them as part of our society. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Lynn. Questions? Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say to Lynn and Andre, thank you for speaking up yet again this morning. I'm sure, I think, I know you said you watched the video from our workshop we had a few days ago.
I did.
So for the public, if they, if they want to see a more, a more in-depth conversation, we just spent about, roughly, I think, about an hour or so doing this, a pretty robust discussion on funding our aging services, including senior centers. That was a pretty, pretty big part of our topic altogether. So that's on our YouTube channel, and it's certainly worth your time if you're interested in this topic. I, for one, would like to see us do something a little bit different in terms of less political in nature. I think this ought to be more data-driven, more, more formulaic, in my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other, other points. I'll make this again. Again, one mil, maybe officers, a little bit, Andre, but this is based on 2023 numbers. One mil in Oaklawn Improvement District generates about $8,100. The, the total levy for the Oaklawn Improvement District is about 23.5 mils. Total budget's about $190,000. And so what they're, what's, what's really the discussion since about 2016 is an enhancement of about $22,000 that they met performance measures according to the old formula, but they made about $22,000 for, for them. Again, that's a 2.69 mil equivalent for Oaklawn Improvement District, but for the county, it's one thousandth of a mil. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Any other questions for Lynn? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Okay. The rest of public comment are for specific items throughout the agenda, so we'll hold off on public comment, and I'll make a motion to receive and file. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, en banc meeting minutes of April 4th, 2024.
Okay. All Commissioners have had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes for the en banc on April 4th. Any questions or, or comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the en banc meeting minutes of April 4th, 2024.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item B, regular meeting minutes of April 10th, 2024.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments on these meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 10th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, Item C, Proclamation Declaring Correctional Officers Week.
That's wonderful. We have four proclamations today. Our commissioner is going to read a proclamation, and I am honored to read the proclamation concerning Correctional Officers Week. So, a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas in 1984, then-President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week. The first full week in May has since been recognized as National Correctional Officers Week to honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel nationwide. And whereas the dedication of these correctional officers and detention deputies who serve our community quietly take on very difficult and dangerous duties. And whereas, we would be unable to operate our adult and juvenile detention facilities and community correctional programs without the hard work of these professionals that staff these facilities 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And whereas, Sedgwick County, Kansas, is pleased to join in celebrating Correctional Officers Week, recognizing these men and women who risk their lives and serve so diligently and faithfully. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Correctional Officers Week here in Sedgwick County, and we encourage all citizens to honor and show sincere appreciation for the correctional officers who make it possible to keep the detention and correctional facilities safe each day. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I'll make a motion to approve it as read.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to receive this proclamation is Sheriff Jeff Easter. And Steve Stonehouse.
Good morning, Mr. Manager and Commissioners. Thank you very much for recognizing the hard work that the men and women who choose to work in our correctional facilities or in juvenile detention facility and community residential center. As you stated in your proclamation, this is not easy work. It's often thankless work. They work 24 hours a day, every day of the year, and we often see folks on their worst day of their life. So being able to provide services that help somebody settle in and get into a routine and stay safe while they're in our facilities are our goal, and we greatly appreciate your recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Beatty and Commissioners. We appreciate it. The, I'll be very brief. One of the things that is most important to us is that we do have the support of the community and of the Commissioners, and you guys have shown that time and time again, and this is just another example. So we appreciate that. I'll leave you a piece of good news. You've heard me talk for the last couple of years, being over 130 deputies down, those type of things. We have a class that's in now. Once they graduate, we'll be 31 deputies down.
That's great.
So we are very, very pleased with the direction that we're going, and a lot of it is the support that we receive from you guys. So thank you very much.
Sheriff, we appreciate you, Steve. We appreciate you and your staff and all that you do. It many times goes unseen, all the work that goes on behind the scenes and the heart that you do it with, to really not just serve this community, but serve those people that are in crisis and, and to try to correct paths that may be a little off ward. So we're grateful for you, your staff, everything that you guys do, and we're proud to proclaim this Correctional Officers Week and celebrate it loudly. So thank you again for all the work you do. Very good. Next item, please.
Item D, Proclamation Declaring Bike Month ICT.
Okay. I've asked Commissioner Lopez to read this proclamation.
All right. Whereas the Sedgwick County Health Department and the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita are teaming up with the county and community partners to recognize National Bike Month in our community. And whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans and is a valuable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation and exercise. Whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users in an effort to reduce accidents and injuries. And whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve residents' health and well-being, quality of life, community spirit, and reduction of pollution and congestion. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Bike Month ICT, and encourage all residents, businesses, independent cyclists throughout our community to support the implementation of the Wichita Bicycle Master Plan. And Commissioners, we've heard the proclamation, so I will move that we adopt and make May 2024 Bike Month ICT.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And to accept this is Shay Rowe, Outreach Health Educator of Sedgwick County Health Department.
Good morning. Thanks for joining.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And thank you for accepting our proclamation as well. Also, keep it brief. Bike Month Wichita has been a long time in the making, and I'm glad it's finally, if you'll pardon the pun, rolling out, I suppose. Our events are actually starting today. We're starting with Bike to Happy Hour, because what's worse than biking to happy hour is driving to happy hour.
Yes.
So any opportunity to improve So any opportunity to improve the health and wellness of our citizens, we'll absolutely take advantage of. We encourage you all to take advantage of it, too. Give us a quick Google, just type us into the Google machine, we'll pop right up with all of our events. And anything you can do to get on two wheels with us, we absolutely encourage you to do. Right. Thank you so much.
Very good. Yeah. Any questions or comments? We're excited to proclaim Bike Month here in Wichita, and best of luck. You guys do a lot of work in this community. You're very present and very involved, so thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, proclamation declaring Lupus Awareness Month.
Okay. I've asked Commissioner Howell to read this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to read this. I do this in the honor of those folks I know in my life that do have lupus, so I appreciate the chance to read this this morning. Proclamation says, whereas lupus is a severe, chronic, and unpredictable autoimmune disease that can cause life-threatening damage to any organ in the body, causing the immune system to attack healthy tissues and organs. Lupus can be a debilitating and life-altering condition, impacting individuals of all ages, ethnicities, and genders, with a high prevalence among women. And whereas raising awareness about lupus is crucial, early detection, proper diagnosis, and improved treatment outcomes. And whereas many primary care physicians are not fully aware of all the signs and symptoms of lupus, causing people with lupus to suffer for many years before they can obtain a diagnosis and begin treatment. People with lupus need access to medical specialists and high-quality multidisciplinary care, including emotional, psychological, and social care. And whereas medical research efforts to find the cause of lupus create, create useful tools to monitor disease activity and develop more targeted and tolerable treatments are underfunded in comparison with diseases of similar magnitude and severity. And whereas the month of May has been designated as Lupus Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to educate the public about lupus, support those affected, and foster a sense of community. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Lupus Awareness Month in Cedric County, and urging all citizens to join in raising awareness, supporting affected individuals, and promoting ongoing research efforts. Mr. Chairman, I would make a, a motion, we would adopt this proclamation.
Yes, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And to receive this, we, we were asking for Mariah Brown. If she's here, please come forward. While she's coming forward, I just wanted to go ahead and make a point here that, it wasn't in the proclamation this morning, but she represents an organization called Dirt Road Auto and Diesel. Dirt Road Auto and Diesel Annual Lupus Carnival.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, sir.
And for short, we call it DRADs.
Yes.
It sounds like a wrong term to me, but we're going to use the word DRADs because you, y'all made it up.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Tell us, please, welcome to the, to our meeting this morning. Please tell us about the event and what else, whatever you'd like to share.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you guys for having me. My name is Mariah Brown, founder of DRADs Annual Lupus Carnival. What our goal is with the annual Lupus Carnival is to raise funds and awareness. We donate all the phone, all the funds that we receive to the Lupus Alliance Research, or Lupus Research Alliance, I apologize. All the funds that we've raised for them go directly to the research. Lupus doesn't have a cure, so they're still in process of trying to find better ways of treatment. We're getting a little bit better medications that are not so damaging and, and have such horrible side effects. So it's nice that all the money that they get, they dedicate directly back to the research and not into, you know, CEOs and things like that. So really great. What we do every year is something different. We normally do events at racetracks, at the drag races. We do a car show, we do a cruise, we do a big raffle. We have different racing classes and sponsors that kind of help us fund those, those things. So I would like to thank you guys for approving this proclamation to recognize May as Lupus Awareness Month. It's a huge success for our efforts to raise awareness for our community, for those who are struggling with lupus around us. I am a lupus warrior. I just passed my seventh anniversary of my initial diagnosis. So as someone who struggles with lupus every day, you know, this, it speaks volumes to everything that we've been working so hard for. Lupus often goes misdiagnosed or left undiagnosed and untreated, causing those who struggle life-threatening or painful experiences. So with Lupus Awareness Month being recognized, we hope our efforts to increase education, awareness, and symptom management will improve the lives of our fellow lupus warriors. I invite you all to stand with us in solidarity on May 10th, to wear purple in support of all lupus warriors on World Lupus Day. And again, I would like to thank you guys so much for the recognition in this horrendous incurable disease.
Mariah, thank you for explaining all that to us. Did you tell us the details of where this event's going to be held and how to find more, and more information?
Um, yes. Unfortunately for this year, we're, we're putting a pause on it. But you can always find information on our Facebook page at DRADs, D-R-A-D apostrophe S, Annual Lupus Carnival, and CAR is all capitalized, it's pun-on words. We do keep up information there. We do put our fundraising efforts on there. It's something that we do work on annually, all year long. But if anybody wants to get involved with that, everything that we have received for donations for the raffle will be on silent auction on that website, so we will still have that available. And then we're hoping to get ramped up for 2025.
And I'm so glad you've had seven years of help that you needed so much. That's, that's good to hear that. If there's a group out, if there's people out there that, that wonder if they have this, or if they're someone who knows they have it and they want to get some support, is there a support group out there they can connect with?
Yeah, we do have a lupus support group, a Wichita Lupus Support Group on Facebook. If you're not able to find it, it is kind of difficult to find. You can always just reach out to my, my DRADs Annual Lupus Facebook page. I can always get people pointed in the right direction.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing awareness to this, this month, and appreciate you making this important to us today. Appreciate that.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mariah. Appreciate you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, proclamation declaring cystic fibrosis awareness month.
Okay. We've asked Commissioner Meitzner to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proud to read this proclamation. Whereas cystic fibrosis is caused by a defective gene that affects the lungs, pancreas, and other organs, leading to life-threatening infections. There are close to 40,000 children and adults living with cystic fibrosis in the United States, with 410 of those in Kansas. Cystic fibrosis can affect people of every racial and ethnic group. And whereas since being founded in 1955, the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation has worked alongside the cystic fibrosis community to effectively transform a genetic disease in a single generation. And whereas in Kansas, there are only four accredited cystic fibrosis care center programs. Among those, two are in Wichita, one for pediatric patients and another for adults. Recognizing and appreciating the efforts of these locations in providing care for those diagnosed with the cystic fibrosis is important, as they are making a significant difference in the lives of many people. And whereas the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation provides funding for and accredits more than 130 care centers and 35 affiliated programs nationwide, the high quality of specialized care available throughout the care center network has led to the improved length of and quality of life for people with cystic fibrosis. And whereas real progress has been made in improving the length and quality of life for people with cystic fibrosis, but there is still no cure. Together, we will build hope, raise awareness, and add for tomorrows. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Cystic Fibrosis Awareness Month in Cedric County, and urge all citizens to join in raising awareness, supporting effective, affected individuals, and promoting ongoing research efforts. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And here to accept is Casey Padding, the Associate Executive Director, Heart of the American Chapter of the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for accepting this proclamation. I'll be brief. I have a group of us here today. I've got a CF grandparent, I have several members from the Ascension Via Christie Cystic Fibrosis Care Center. It's clinic day, so I know they're anxious to give back to patients. I've got a couple CF moms. I am also a cystic fibrosis mom. And then some amazing volunteers for our WAC committee. We do have our Great Strides Walk happening May 4th, so this Saturday, fingers crossed, if the weather holds, and we'd love to see people out there. You can find out more about us at cff.org. Thank you so much again.
Yeah, very good. And what a, what a profound proclamation. How many people, do you know offhand, how many people in the United States experience CF?
Around 40,000, but that number is growing because of all of the treatments and the medications and due to the research, there are more adults living with cystic fibrosis today than ever before.
Okay.
It used to be a pediatric disease. In 1955, kids weren't living to kindergarten, and now the median life expectancy is over 56 years old.
Yeah, technology and the advance in medication and research, so.
It's amazing.
Yeah, very good. Thank you for all the work you guys do with your clinics and, and all the work you guys do for this specific cause. We're grateful. We really are grateful, so thank you. Okay. Yes. Okay, that was four proclamations, and we want to celebrate proclamations by taking some pictures and just speak with you out here. If, we'll take just about a 10-minute break, we'll pop out to the stairs out here, grab some pictures, and then we'll be right back to resume the meeting.
I am ready.
Okay. Back to work we go. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item G, resolutions appointing Greg Cockworth to the Cedric County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. And if it's okay with, with you, Chairman, I'd propose taking items G and H together, they both involve the same advisory board. So as Madam Clerk read, Greg Cockworth would be an appointee from Chairman Beatty to the newly-formed Cedric County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board. Item H includes appointing David Thorne as Commissioner Howell's appointee to the same board. Both resolutions are in order, and the recommended action is to adopt those.
Okay, wonderful. So both of these individuals, Greg and David, are going to go to the Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board. So, so I'll make a motion to appoint Greg Cockworth. So I'll make a motion to appoint Greg Cockworth and David Thorne to the Cedric County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Boards.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And we have the Clerk's office here to swear you guys in.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board. So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good. While they're signing that, we'll ask if they'd like to make any comment. I will tell you about this board in particular. It's the 911 Community Advisory Board. This is a sensational board that we are just building out, that as we continue to modernize the 911 department, reinvest into the 911 department, the staff that's over there, bringing in community input is valuable. This was our director, Laura Forshi. This was her idea. She wanted to expand the opportunity for the community to have insight and input into these processes. And as we are actively building out these boards, every week, we've had new people coming onto this board, so I think we're getting pretty close. If we can get an update, Tom, maybe later today via email of what's left. No, SCAC's still got to do their appointment. But the other part of this board is that we want individuals that have diverse experience, not just those that have had touchpoints with public safety, but we want individuals from the business community, nonprofit community, different ideas. We want this to be representative of the community. So I'm very, very happy, Greg, that when we announced this board, you began to dialogue with me about questions and expressing your interest of being on this board to set and help to shape some of these conversations. So I'm grateful that you're willing to serve. Greg, any comments?
Thanks for the opportunity. Look forward to it.
Well, thank you. David, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I wish I knew you, Greg. I don't know you yet, but I look forward to getting to know you a little bit more. I do know David, and the reason I think I picked David for this is because he has no agenda. He is just very inquisitive. He asks great questions. He knows how to basically push a meeting forward to get to conclusions. He's very inquisitive. He's very data-driven. We have a kindred spirit in that front. I really love the way that you look at problems and you kind of attack them logically and looking at data to drive whatever decisions need to be made. So I have a lot of faith in you, brother. I think you're going to do a really great job at this. I hope that the board might even consider you to be chairman of that board. I think you'd be a great person to be chair of that board if possible. But I could not find a better person to be my appointment on this board. I'm extremely proud of you, and I think you're going to do great things. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greg, again, I trust in Chairman Beatty's appointment of you at this very important board. And David, I saw you earlier. I was pleased and kind of surprised, but pleased when I found that Commissioner Howell had appointed you for this important role. Your background, and you'll bring a lot of value to this board. And I'm welcome, and thank you for both of you that are taking this as serious as it deserves. So thank you.
Yeah. Very important board. You've got distinguished individuals, and you're going to bring great perspective to this board. So thank you again for your willingness to serve. Any comments?
Thank you for the kind comments. This is an honor and a very tough challenge. Love this community, but there's some hurt and brokenness going on, and we will take a very hard look at the data and just enjoy supporting some of the fantastic frontline workers we have. A lot of voices we need to embrace into this, and I look forward to meeting the rest of the board.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. Thank you again, guys, for your willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Resolution Appointing Brent Nelson to the Cedric County Fifth District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Commissioner Howell. I'm sorry, Justin Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this item would be a resolution appointing Brent Nelson to Commissioner Howell's Citizens Advisory Board. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt it.
Now, Commissioner Howell.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a resignation. Actually, the chairman of the board had served a couple of years and decided to step away, but he was essentially a small business owner in the city of Derby, very engaged in policymaking of the region there. And I thought, who could I think of as a good replacement for that person? Because I love, again, I love to have diversity on this board. And Dr. Nelson, he's a retired dentist. Dr. Nelson's very well-known in the community and a very successful business, and he's looking for ways to get involved in helping move government forward. And he just brings to the table a lot of willingness to, again, be data-driven. So I think this is a really great appointment. I'm going to be thrilled to have him on this board. And I know the chairman of my board is here again today to celebrate, but unfortunately, Dr. Nelson's not in the audience. So I look forward to hopefully having him sworn in this Friday at our first CAD board meeting. But meanwhile, I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we would approve the resolution that would appoint Brent Nelson, Dr. Nelson, to the Citizens Advisory Board for District Number Five.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And I don't know, Commissioner Howell, is Brent here today? He is not here today. Okay, so Clerk's office will contact Brent and get him sworn in and all the paperwork's done. Very good. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item J, Public Hearing for Proposed Adoption of the National Electrical Code 2023 Edition.
Hey, good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, yes, for the record, Chris Laberman, Metro Area Building and Construction Department. And as stated, this will be the public hearing to adopt the National Electrical Code, the 2023 edition, and that will include local amendments. So the NEC is Article Four of our Unified Building and Trade Code, the UBTC. This adoption includes an updated national code as well as local amendments. This is published by the National Fire Protection Association. Excuse me, that's NFPA 70 is specifically the code. It is designed to nest with the International Code Council codes that we use, as well as the fire department. As a matter of policy, we are currently revising our trades codes every three years in order to remain current with the industry and to be able to take advantage of the latest technology. This, as alluded to, coordinates across the related codes where the NEC generally leads by a year. It tends to be in front, so the other codes actually more so coordinate with it. But nonetheless, we ensure that they all work together, and part of the adoption process is to ensure no conflicts. So latest adoption was in the fall of 2020. That was the 2020 version of the NEC, which is what we are currently in. It had 27 local amendments. This would move us to the 2023 version with 20 amendments. So we're happy to say that we've been able to whittle that down by seven. Part of what we like about that is, in some cases, those are amendments that we no longer need because the national code is now doing what our amendment did. Or in some cases, we just, our amendment may be obsolete, or the code is now less restrictive, so we don't have to have that. So we're always happy to see those. It indicates that we're going the right direction with our codes. As we go through some of the specific items, you'll see that it does include two items that are something unique that the NEC has done with a future adoption date that they're putting in there. We are looking at those as adoption or exclusion based on our feeling about those two items. It also includes two exclusions. It's actually one section, but it's two parts to that section that I'll describe. And then important to note that these codes are approved by the BOCC and that this is a public hearing to ensure that we receive any public comment or input that we may not have captured to this point. Our code does cover the unincorporated county as well as the city of Wichita. We also have 18 smaller cities and portions of our two adjacent counties that utilize our code. So important to note that this will impact all of them. The current code, contractors have been very cooperative with those requirements. Our main gauge is safety with those, but we also, of course, track any management issues or confusion that we have in those codes, and we've been very happy to not have had much of that with these. Some of the tenants, as the electrical code has adapted, whether it be arc fault, whether it be external power disconnects, those have been a little bit of an evolution. Those have certainly come to a point where they're very reliable, very manageable at this point, doing the job. So we do think we're in a great place with those. And though there has been quite a bit of discussion, as we will see when we go through this with a few portions of this code, but all in all, the amendments this time are quite This code was coordinated, the coordination was led by our Board of Electrical Appeals, so very grateful to that group of gentlemen who led this. A lot of effort to ensure that the industry associations were consulted and that their inputs were included. That included the National Electrical Contractors Association and the independent electrical contractors, as well as some of the training agencies and different associations that they work with. Of course, our fire departments are involved in these, as well as our local electrical suppliers. And where, in this case, the amendments that we want to highlight mainly impact residential in our builders, there was even more than the normal coordination with our builders association. So several very good, very productive meetings there. It was very good to see their input. Actually, in the main case that we discussed, our board was a little less restrictive in their language than that that was proposed by the builders. So that was a very big win. We'll move on to the parts of the code, the specific amendments that we do want to highlight here. So the first one is dealing with permissible loads. And what this is telling you is that the code is making an allowance in areas where you have a light load, a light current load, specifically lights, lighting circuits in bathrooms, bathroom exhaust fans, a gas fireplace, for example. Those areas do not draw much power. In an effort to reduce some of the cost there, we're allowed to now use a 10-amp circuit breaker. That does come also with lighter wiring requirements, so there is an option there to use an aluminum wire that is copper-clad. So though, and again, those would only be for those very light-load areas. So it is a bit of a cost reduction initiative, and then also allowances there, especially as we see LEDs more all the time. Those do not draw a lot of power. So the national code, important to emphasize, this is a national code item. This is not a local amendment, and we are choosing to leave this in the code. We feel it's safe enough. One interesting aspect to this is, these have not started to be installed yet, so the breakers are available, the wiring is actually not yet available. So the code is getting out in front of the industry in this, making allowances while these products are developed. So this would allow that use as those come into play and come on the market. Second item, and this was, again, our main topic of discussion with our builders, had to do with kitchen islands. So current code requires power to the island. That is to reduce safety issues with it being installed later. Our code will no longer require that the peninsula have power, so there's an option that it can be without electric. So that is less restrictive. What is slightly more is if you do put power to the countertop or the island countertop now, it has to be a pop-up receptacle. It has to be on the island. It can't be on the sides. So you can see in the slide that there were numerous accidents, 9,700 accidents that were tracked across the US in which children were injured by pulling the cords off the counter as they hang down. So the design here is to keep the cords off of the side of the counter. So this would not affect a backsplash. You would still be able to have an outlet there because the appliance can be against that. It just does not allow those where you would have a cord hanging over the side. So the other piece of this is, there is a requirement that you are able to access the island in order to bring power later. Most of our houses around here have basements or crawl space, so that makes that easy. In cases where the house is on a slab, the builder will be required to supply a raceway in that slab so that it will be completely up to them whether they include the wire in that or whether that can just be pulled later. But they will be required to maintain that availability. Moving on to another one that we've had a lot of staff discussion on, this had some discussion with our builders. It was actually not a great deal as they see that most of their subcontractors and suppliers are moving this direction. So they kind of went with it, so to speak. But surge protection, in this case, we're talking commercial. So commercial buildings already require surge protection, with the exception of multifamily, those that get into the residential allowances within commercial code. So this adds that surge protection is required in dwelling areas, motels, any sleeping-type unit will now require surge protection as part of the commercial aspect of the code. Along with that, residences will also be required, newly-constructed residents by this code would be required to include surge protection. So in the last cycle, this was in the national code. We viewed it as mainly protection of the appliances, mainly protection of the sometimes high-dollar electrical equipment in the home, and therefore, we amended it out. We still allowed it as an option, of course, but did not, our amendment did not require it. Since that time, the NFPA has released data and commentary stating that those are jurisdictions like ours that did that. That was not their intent. They did intend this as a safety item. So the discussion there comes down to, while, yes, this does, to a great extent, and a protection of your equipment, but that equipment includes arc fault and ground fault outlets. It includes smoke and fire alarms that do now have circuit boards in them. So it is seen as enough of a safety item as well that it should be included in the code, and we have elected and are recommending that this remain in the code. Again, this is not a local amendment. This is baseline code, but this does omit a previous local amendment where we did not specifically require this. We allowed it as an option. Lastly, we, or second to last with this one, we also have seen, so again, another national code item where a lot of issues, especially fire-related issues, in ag buildings. So this is specific to buildings that would house livestock, and the code will now require that any wiring that is not exposed, so any wiring behind the wall that is not visible will be required to be protected by a raceway, by a conduit of some sort, in order to, or a protected sheath on the wire that could be as well. So that will ensure and require that those be protected so that the rodents cannot chew through them as easily and create fire hazards behind the wall. So now, lastly, a few of the local amendment provisions we want to finish up with. So the removals that we discussed, so we did on the first two, ground fault performance testing and field arc energy performance. So the code still does require that manufacturers test that equipment before it arrives in the field. The baseline code also calls for a field test. Our experience over the last three years of code is that those tests are very expensive. They're very labor-intensive and very, very seldom reveal a fault. So our amendment is removing those as a field requirement, removing that what we feel is a fairly burdensome requirement, but emphasizing that the manufacturers will still be required to do their testing, and the equipment will arrive with that code feature met. We also have had, for many years, a requirement in our local code that when you build a home, you have to leave open breaker spaces for future expansion. We are no longer requiring that. We still recommend that it's a good idea. Planning for the future is never a bad thing, but we felt, again, that it was kind of outdated with the way most homes are built these days, and then burdensome for us to require a minimum number, et cetera. So we'll remove that as kind of an obsolete requirement, and again, just in dialogue, encourage our industry to continue to make those allowances. So our deferred items, and these were discussed last code cycle as well. The code has begun to include GF CI protection for 250-volt appliances, air conditioning units, et cetera. Again, this tends to come in with multifamily and commercial buildings. We do not see these devices as reliable enough yet to consider this as a requirement. Actually, the baseline code, so they did something unique here in that they put it in as a code item, but are not, they kicked the enforcement date out of code cycle to where it would not be fully enforced. They've now extended that again. So our language extends that slightly beyond the next cycle of the code, and also still allows this as an option for those who would like to try that. But again, giving our question, giving how much we question the reliability of these devices, as well as the necessity, we are not requiring that. So with that, that concludes what we had for you today. So with that, that concludes what we had for you today, commissioners, formal presentation-wise. We recommend that, or so actually, we'll obviously, we'll gladly stand for any questions you may have of staff. We've got our electrical chief, Chris Nordic, with us, as well as our BEA chair, Dwayne Snyder, and a few other local members here who may speak to us, and I'm sure they would be happy to answer questions. So obviously, we would expect, Mr. Chair, that the public hearing would be open for comment, and then at the end of that, we do intend to recommend that the BOCC adopt the NEC and local amendments as proposed.
Okay. And as customary, what we traditionally do is we open a public hearing and receive public comment. Before we get to the public hearing piece of it, I want to see if any commissioners have questions or comments for staff. Commissioner Mincher.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Chris, thanks for all the work, and really to the board. And I know these are burdensome and review for us as commission, but I see you have to do all these, the plumbing, the electric, every three years. I think that's good practice. And I particularly appreciate your explanations and the fact on that one slide that you've removed, looks like about two or three, about three items that are kind of, you know, they're burdensome to the builders, and I'm glad you evaluated and said, most all the time, it's not relevant, and it's just burdensome. So whatever your comments were about justifying eliminating that, I think that's really good, and I'm sure the construction industry appreciates some of those, as well as, I know, some of the other requirements that you put in there for safety and update on national code. So I just want to say thank you, but also really thank you, your board, that those are volunteer electricians that spend good amount of time and knowledge. Thank you all for serving on that. It's much appreciated.
Okay. Chris, to be clear, two questions. Number one, just so the public's clear, we're deciding today if we want to accept the national recommendations, correct? And if we want to amend out any of these national recommendations? That's the scope of our work today, is that correct?
That is correct.
And these are only on new construction, new build? We're not going to back?
Remodel.
Is it remodels as well?
So that's specific to the amendments. So the code obviously covers everything electrical. Most of these amendments are specific to new construction, and we can have Mr. Nordic clarify as needed. But generally, then, if we're into that scenario, only if you remodel to the point of a service change or service update, then you would require, then you would have to bring it up to new code, since you're basically redoing your electrics at that point, anyway.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, any other questions for Chris, or comments for Chris? Okay, then I want to officially open the public hearing and see if there is any public comment. Just welcome to come right over here. For those providing public comment, just name an address, and our clerk will give you five minutes.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm Dwayne Snyder, Central States Electric, and I live in 901 Park Glen, Clearwater, Kansas, and I am on the BEA. We have done an extensive amount of review over these codes and used a lot of years of experience in trying to evaluate how these codes should be amended and how they should be used. One particular is the surge restor. We actually amended that out in 2020 so that we allowed people to use those if they saw fit. And we also seen with listening to people in the field along with ourselves, how important that is to protect items such as safety items, the arc faults, the GFCIs, smoke alarms. So we believe that this is an important issue that needs to be installed in this, along with all the other codes that have been amended.
Appreciate your feedback and insight. Any questions for Dwayne? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other individuals that would like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I'll officially close the public hearing and bring a conversation back to the bench. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions, and I'll start with Chris, I guess. So let's start with the 10-amp wiring. You said that it's not available, and we talked a little bit yesterday about it's not even really designed yet. One of my concerns, of course, is that we'd be confused with copper, solid copper wiring. And right now, we don't know what their plan is in terms of how this will be designed because it doesn't currently exist. I would assume they'll have a different jacket color, but do we know what the plan is there? Can we talk about? How would someone know if this is a copper clad aluminum wire versus a solid conductor copper wire?
Now, and that is a great question, Commissioner, as we have not seen these yet. So we expect that that identification will be made readily available. We will, of course, communicate with the industry as these come out. Now, if we had a concern with that as the equipment was to come to market, we could always look at some form of adjustment or amendment to our code if that was needed. But you are correct that, at this point in time, we do not know exactly what those will look like.
Do you allow aluminum wiring that's not copper clad? Do you allow aluminum wiring to be installed in residential homes today?
We do. I'm going to defer to Mr. Nordic for exactly where that is authorized. But yes, there are areas where that is authorized.
Yeah, I was saying, in terms of, you know, your receptacles and lighting, I would be surprised if that was the case, but let's find out from Chris.
Commissioner, Chris Nordic, MABCD for the record. Aluminum is allowed, but it's allowed at a minimum size. So for residential, it's a minimum size of number one, aluminum. We don't allow any small branch circuit aluminum.
One og, was you talking about, like 50 amps or higher?
Yeah, larger.
So if you had a sub-panel, for example, or if you had a dryer, say, or say you have something out in the building that was 200 feet away, you could run aluminum wiring that would save you some money because that would be very expensive to do that in solid conductor.
Correct.
Right. But in terms of branch circuitry through the house, receptacles and lighting, you would never allow aluminum wiring in a new construction today?
That's right. That was amended decades ago.
And you know why it was outlawed?
Well, the conductor itself, aluminum is soft. It's a soft conductor, and the termination points is where we have issues. So that's the purpose of the copper cladding on the new.
And that's because they expand and contract with temperature, correct?
Yes.
So I see, I'm concerned right now because a copper clad, very thin, probably a few microns thick, I'm guessing, to give that a better contact on the surface, doesn't solve the problem with expansion and contraction. And I am concerned, since we don't know if this wiring will be a white jacketed wire, similar to a 14/2 solid conductor copper wire, that someone may be, they may be tricked into assuming that this is a 15-amp circuit, and they may actually add a receptacle to what should be, you know, should be designed for a 10-amp circuit. The motivation for this appears to be to do some cost savings, but I don't know that the cost savings isn't going to have a negative impact on life and safety. Again, you talked about safety a minute ago, Mr. Labor, and you talked about safety is our motivation, and I agree, that safety ought to be our motivation, but when you're talking about putting a less quality wire in a home to save money, that may actually provide, create a life and safety concern on those contacts throughout the home because of expansion and contraction, just like the old aluminum wiring. Plus, if you bend it back and forth three or four times, it gets brittle, and that becomes a hotspot, which can short out and create a fire. So there's reasons why we don't allow aluminum wiring in new construction today on these branch circuits, but yet we're going back to aluminum to save wiring on less amperage. Again, if they would go to a, just a thought, I'm not the design person, of course, but if they went to 18-gauge wire on a 5-amp circuit, I'd probably support it. But that's not what this is. This is a 10-amp circuit on a 14/2 aluminum wire, and I have a great concern about that. I don't think this is, since the wiring doesn't even exist. By the way, if in the future, let's say we did not adopt that portion of this today, let's say a year from now, also, we got really happy with this stuff, we realized what they did, it was purple jacketed, and we felt more comfortable, we could amend the code out, we can amend the code out of cycle to include something we don't include today. Is that correct? So just because we're doing this today, and our plan is every three years, doesn't mean we could not change the code a year from now.
That is correct, Commissioner. That's, so, and again, this is not, this is not a local amendment that's allowing this. We're leaving it in the national code as our proposal. The reason we did bring it up is exactly as you state, that there, that this was an item of discussion, it was an item of potential concern for exactly what you stated. The, allowing it to remain as is would open the door to its usage, and then we would have to step back from that if we found something we were concerned about. Another option would be to go the direction that you proposed, amend it out at this point, and then bring it back if we, if we found in the coming years that we had no concern.
Well, just for the public's knowledge, I have asked for different language as it has been proposed today. I think the BEA maybe even met on some of my concerns potentially, and they chose not to make any changes. So I don't have any amendment language here today, but I do have some concerns. I tell you what, buyer beware, I would not buy a house with this aluminum wire installed. Let the buyer beware. And by the way, it's hidden, it's inside your walls, you don't even know it's there. So I'm very concerned that we're going to allow something. By the way, you know, just to, I made a list of some things I thought about in the past. They still allow shark bite stuff in walls. I think it's not very smart. That's just a flood waiting to happen. They install, they allow these Romex splice kits inside walls, hidden behind sheet rock. I think that's the craziest thing ever. We should never allow that. But we do. Masonite siding was approved at one point, that's no longer allowed. Polybutylene piping was allowed, that's been outlawed by now. Aluminum wire, we just talked about aluminum wire a minute ago, was allowed and actually pushed out, especially most of those 1970s somes that were total electric. Almost all of them had exclusively solid conductor aluminum wire, and tons of house fires, and people died. So they did, we're going to go back to aluminum to save some money, I think is a hidden danger, and I'm very concerned about that. So I don't like that part of this at all. Let's go on to a couple of other little things here. You mentioned there was two parts of this code. One is for sub panels and one's for main panels on surge protectors. I was under the impression if you put a surge protector device in your main panel, you didn't have to put one in a sub panel. But now, the way this is reading now, I see that you have to do both.
So I'm not sure the question, Commissioner, are you, so there are two separate portions to that. One is the requirement for multifamily, for our motels, hotels, et cetera. The other is for homes.
Okay, so this, okay. You have Article 230.67 and 215.18. One of those is for main service, and one of those is for?
Feeders.
For feeders. It says, in the description, protects against voltage surges that can damage important sensitive equipment being served by a sub panel.
Which, which Commissioner, would be almost every multifamily dwelling. They're sub panels. They're not main service panels.
Okay, so you have to have one, in that situation, you have to have one at the main panel and at the sub panel.
The main ones are already taken care of in previous code. So this is the addition of the feeder protection for that specific space.
Let me come back to SPDs in just a minute. Let's talk about a couple of other things here. I do agree with the, the, the less regulations on those four things that you mentioned a minute ago. I do have a question on the, on the 250-volt outlets. As we know, service line coming into your home is 230 volts, plus minus 10 volts. It's two phases. The outlets are rated for 250 volts, which is interesting. You guys made this requirement for 250-volt outlets, but the panel, it's a 230-volt wire that feeds to a 250-volt device. What I'm wondering is, so that means stoves and dryers and air conditioning compressor units, they would have to be on GFI outlets from this point forward?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, just point of reference, those are about, those double outlets for about 50-amp service are about $100, a little more than $100 apiece on the retail market today, okay? Maybe you guys get them cheaper, but I don't know that a wholesaler would necessarily sell them for less than what they would be available on the retail market. So that's an increase of several hundred dollars per home, just to put that out there. And again, I'm not aware of a problem that we're solving. By the way, you said we're deferring these? We're not doing this in this code cycle?
That is correct.
Thank you. Well, I hope that we continue to defer these. I don't think that's a good thing to add. So again, the fact that they're deferred, I'm happy about that. Let's go back to SPDs for just a minute. So on SPDs, you argue that they're for life and safety. I, again, I, maybe make a few points here. Smoke alarms are designed to be replaced about 10 years, some of them less. And the only way you know they need to be replaced is basically by being smart about the dates. There's no way to look at that. Most, some of the newer ones that have a 10-year battery, they start to chirp at 10 years, and they'll tell you that they have to be replaced if it's chirping. Those are probably better than the older ones that are installed, either battery-powered or hardwired and parallel with each other. But in either case, those things do, are not able to sense smoke the way they are when they're brand new. They get, they get where they're no longer sensitive to smoke, and they should be replaced. But most people don't know that. These SPDs are designed to essentially filter off surges in voltage, not brownouts, but surges in voltage of, say, 30, 40, 50 volts, but a couple nanoseconds in length. So it's very small duration, but a high little spike like that. Now, lightning could be 1,000 volts, so these are not going to stop a lightning strike from damaging your TV or microwave or any of these devices in your home. This is for basically day-to-day dirty power, if you will. I haven't called West or Evergy yet to find out whether or not they have any data on their, on the energy being provided to the homes in this area. But these SPDs, again, they're different, there are different sizes, and they, some of them work more effectively, the larger ones work more effectively than the smaller ones. But since it's in the code, there's nothing in the code says what size you have to put in. So my guess is the builders will put in the least expensive option. So it's not going to provide very much protection. Interesting thing is, a smoke detector, if it doesn't self-test, if it selftests correctly, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to detect smoke. But it sounds, by talking, again, I contacted Leviton, who manufactures a lot of these receptacles, and they talked about, in general terms, a voltage spike on these, on today's devices will damage the electronics of those devices, such they will not test or reset correctly. So it doesn't impact the smoke, the ability for that smoke detector to detect smoke. What it does is affects the ability for that smoke detector to actually sound an alarm and be tested. It also affects the GFI or AFCI, or GFCI or AFCI outlets. So they may, they will no longer, they will no longer test and reset correctly. So if your smoke detector is chirping at you or has some odd behavior, and it doesn't test and reset, it doesn't test correctly, and your outlets are not passing current the way they should, then the obvious thing to do at that point is contact an electrician or replace those devices. The SPD doesn't necessarily provide life and safety, it just protects that device from having to be replaced. So those devices actually stop current flow. It doesn't, again, it may stop its ability to be tested on a smoke detector, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that the homeowner has options to see if these devices are working correctly. And should they be failed, it doesn't provide, if you will, a threat to life and safety from the electronics portion of that device. The guy from Leviton said explicitly that this is more about consumer electronics insurance. This is not about life and safety. But these will add several hundred dollars, and I know someone says $150, it depends if you put the cheap one in that's purchased by a wholesaler on a construction of a brand-new home. It might be $150. But if you put the big one into an existing home and have an electrician come out, it could be several hundred dollars. And these things will, these things will in fact fail. And when they do fail, because they are just like a lot of other things, when you have dirty power, eventually they'll stop working correctly. These devices, because it's not in the code anywhere, can be installed behind the electrical panel, where you have to unscrew the panel to see it. And it's given someone a false sense of safety in their home. And that alone, I think, again, so my suggestion would be number, would be two things. Mandate in the code that it has to be visible status light. And number two, I would make these, if you're going to install them, the code should tell you how to install them, it should be inspected per the code. But it should not be required, it should be recommended. Again, I think these are good devices, I want one in my home, but it's insurance. It's not something that's going to save life, it's not life and safety, it's about insurance. It might protect your TV set, okay? So the cost, affordable housing is a real problem. Today, we just talked about these 250-volt outlets requiring GFI protection, and now we're talking about SPDs installed in essentially every home from this point forward. And that's, again, on the retail side, several hundred dollars. So the price of affordable housing is going up and up and up because of regular So the price of affordable housing is, is going up and up and up because of regulations. Meanwhile, we're getting cheap on wiring and putting, in my opinion, a dangerous wire in people's homes potentially. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I cannot support this today. This is not ready for adoption. They should make some changes to it and as it's currently worded, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you for comments, Chris, staff, thank you for comments. Any other questions or comments from the bench?
Let me make one more comment, please, go ahead. I just want to say, thank you, Chris, and Chris, I, you guys are great people. I'm not mad at you, I'm not upset at anybody here. I appreciate the BEA's work on this. We just happen to disagree on the technical, on the technical side of this. I'm an electrical engineering career, my, I understand this stuff extremely well. In fact, I've asked questions at the beginning of some of this discussion where I think some of the folks who were advocating for some of this, I think, didn't understand some of the things I was already getting at the beginning. My point is this, we're not against each other, please don't be mad at me, we're not, we're not, there's no animosity here. I just don't agree with this adoption as it currently is worded. I think that right now, there are some better options out there. We should, in my opinion, amend out that copper clad wiring for now. We should make the SPDs optional and we should mandate if they're going to be installed, make them visible. With that, I would, I would approve this. And I would, I would seriously ask for reconsideration of those three things, but until then, I'll be a no. Thank you again.
Okay. Other questions or comments or a motion from the bench?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, again, thank you, thank you, the board and for all the dialogue that went on, but it always can be amended at whatever time. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve as presented to the adopt the, this code as presented.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris, for all the work you and your staff have done. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K PUD 2024-0001, zone change request in the county from SF20 single family residential to create a PUD planned unit development to allow for development, to allow commercial office use on site generally located north of East Harry Street and one half mile east of South 127th Street East.
Okay, very impressive, Madam Clerk. Scott, before we get rolling, there's two comments that I need to make before we begin the open, or the hearing on this specific zone change request. We kind of have a somewhat unique situation from the bench today as we only have four commissioners present since Commissioner Dennis is, is participating in the honor flight. And second, we have an agenda that is pursuant to KSA 12-757 that requires a three fourths vote to approve a zone change or a two thirds vote to deny a zone change. So these are super majority votes. So these fractions are based on the full membership of the board. There's an assumption of full membership of the board. With only four commissioners present, in essence, the board action, other than referring it back to the MAPC, which is an option that we can entertain, it's, it would require today a unanimous vote, which I don't believe is the intent of the statute. And I think it'd be preferable to give all five commissioners an opportunity to make this decision. Visited with counsel, I've visited with my colleagues. So for that reason, it's my intent that we're going to hear this matter, we'll hear public comment, we'll close public comment. And then after all discussion that's desired by the door, by the board, we're going to defer voting on it for one week. So we'll do the entire hearing and then just defer the voting piece of this, on this specific zoning change. We'll defer it for one week so we can have all five commissioners present and have the entire board vote on the matter. In the meantime, Commissioner Dennis will be able to review all the materials from this meeting and weigh in with questions and comments and, and dialogue. So he'll be prepared for next week's meeting. So any other comments from the commission on that? Okay, so I'll make a motion as we, as we progress throughout. Outside of that, I'd like for the commission to make and declare any ex parte communication.
I'll go first. Yes, I've had extensive ex parte communication, a number of emails, including video and all kinds of stuff from some citizens and I've, I've had ex parte communication with the, with the applicant as well, so.
Okay. I've also had ex parte communication via email with a significant number of emails and a few videos.
I've had the same, I've had some emails, thank you.
Let me underscore the word extensive. I have, I have had extensive interaction with people on both sides of the issue. I've actually been out to the site twice and looked around a little bit, met with the applicant, I met with the neighborhood folks, I think I've received, even if one person sent me over 14, I think sent me 14 emails so, so far. And anyway, yes, my point is, I have, I have been extremely clear that I have no opinion and I'm looking at this, they let the hearing speak to me today so we can make a decision. But, you know, I've had extensive ex parte communication, but I am waiting to hear from people today to find out what, what I'll do. Thank you.
Likewise, although there is ex parte communication, I remain open minded and subjectives to all the conversations from, that will take place today. So with that being said, Mr. Scott Waidell.
Good morning, everyone. Scott Waidell from the Planning Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item. So in this case, the applicant is requesting, as you heard, to rezone the property from SF20 single family to custom zoning, so planned unit development. This item is being heard today because there have been protests received against the application and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting the rezoning in order to allow for the site to be developed as a mixed use development, which would include residential, agricultural and office uses on the site. Site plan is included with the agenda item showing the proposed layout, I'll also show that in a PowerPoint in just a few slides. In terms of the property, as you can see here, the property is located on Harry Street between 127th and 143rd. The subject site is one parcel, approximately just over 29 acres in size. As you heard, it was zoned SF20, single family, and is developed with a single family house and multiple related buildings, most of them agricultural in nature. In terms of context, property of the north is zoned SF20, let's see if we can go to that, here we go, and SF5, single family residential district, is one property with two zoning districts. It's located in unincorporated Cedric County and is currently undeveloped. South of the subject site are properties zoned SF5 and SF20. They are located, there's a, some are located in the city of Wichita, some are located in the unincorporated county. Two of the properties are undeveloped, others are developed with single family residences. Properties to the east are zoned SF5, located in the city of Wichita. Some are developed with single family residences and others are undeveloped reserve areas. Property to the west is zoned SF5 in the unincorporated county and is developed with a single family residence. In terms of the staff report, staff report provides information about development standards, including land uses, setbacks and building heights. Here are just some brief overviews or highlights from that. There is a reserve A, which would surround parcel one. There's only one parcel that's proposed as part of the PUD and I'll see if I can flip to that. Reserve A would surround parcel one. Parcel, so the reserve A would allow agricultural uses and any of the existing uses that are currently located there. Parcel one, which is a portion in the middle, would allow for land uses permitted in SF5 single family and GO general office, except that some additional uses would be prohibited. Those uses are identified in the PUD text and include things like correctional placement, group residence, asphalt or concrete plant and some others. Please note that the staff report, the Planning Department staff report indicates that commercial uses would be allowed, but that is only in the broad sense that in the unified zoning code, office uses are categorized as commercial uses. The proposed PUD would not allow general or limited retail such as a convenience store. The PUD does not require screening around the subject site and reserve A would serve as the landscape buffer, which again, is intended for agricultural uses and the existing uses. In terms of review, on March 14th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this case and considered the application. The Planning Commission voted to approve the zone change request subject to the staff recommended PUD text and that vote was nine to one. Multiple members of the public spoke in opposition to the zone change request at that public hearing and cited concerns with increased traffic as a result of the development, the size and height of the proposed development and current drainage issues. Multiple protests were received and the total of the protests was just over 57% of the protest area. Succeeds the 20% threshold, therefore a super majority of four out of five votes would be needed in order to approve this request. In terms of the commission action, it is recommended the Board of County Commissioners adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the zone change request, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution and authorize the resolution to be published. Again, that would require four out of five votes. Alternatives include the following, you can override the Planning Commission recommendation, make alternative findings and deny the application. That would also require a four out of five votes or two thirds majority. Or as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for further consideration with a statement identifying why it's returning and that would require just a simple majority. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and photos. So here is the property, the subject site outlined in kind of that blue green color. Uh oh, let's see, there we go. Here's the zoning map. We talked about the context and the surroundings just a moment ago. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing that new residential is recommended in the area. Here's the protest map. As you can see, it's just over 57% of the protest area, it's represented. Here's a floodplain map from the area. Floodplains have been something that's come up as part of this discussion from the public. I just want to reiterate that this property is unplatted and that drainage issues are covered during the plating process. So wanted to reiterate that as well as that there is developable area outside of the floodplain also. Here is a graphic, the site plan that was submitted as part of the PUD application, again, showing parcel one located in the middle and reserve A surrounding it. Here's a more detailed graphic representing the proposal for development. And here are some photos from the site and the surrounding area. So this is looking at the subject site with the existing house across the street and down the street and back to the aerial. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Before we open up for public comment, any questions for Scott or staff? Okay, nothing at this time, so we'll officially open up the public hearing piece of this, of this item. The applicant, Nick Estreline, signed up for public comment. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty and commissioners. Nick Estreline, I'm the president of TGC Group. My address is 3029 South Prairie Point, Andover, Kansas, 67002. Out of respect for everybody's time, I'll make this brief. I think everybody has had several opportunities to see this and dialogue about it. I'll certainly stand for questions at the end, but, you know, in, in, my thought process today to speak to you is, despite this being approved at MAPC without change or any suggestions for amendment, as we went through that meeting and through that hearing, I noted several concerns from surrounding property owners and in stepping back from those, gave some consideration and, you know, frankly, a lot of the concerns that were brought to the table in that MAPC meeting are, are my concerns as well and our interest level in this property and developing this for our intended use. Our intended use, to be clear, is for our corporate office. We've got a, a very tight knit familial culture in our company and have a very high level of interest of maintaining that culture, but also providing an environment for people to work in that's outside the walls of a standard office building. Hence why we acquired this property and are pursuing to develop, develop it the way we are. We feel like there's significant value in maintaining the reserve and the agricultural nature and the buffer zone around the property that we're trying to rezone and change. And so again, despite that, we felt that it was going to be important to communicate more clearly our intentions with the surrounding property owners. I drafted a letter and I've, I also provided it via email to all five of you. It went out to the notification list of 250 residents and in that letter, I addressed what I felt to be the concerns that were most repeatedly laid out through the Planning Commission meetings, as well as my stance on those points. And I think what, what was being articulated from, from me is their concerns are also mine and these are the things that we're trying to do to alleviate and slow down anything that could be a detriment to the neighboring property owners. Within that letter, we also invited anybody that received the letter to attend and participate in a voluntary neighborhood meeting. We weren't required to hold the meeting, but we felt moving into the area and intending to be in the area for decades, we thought it would be very nice to communicate directly and give these neighbors and surrounding property owners an opportunity to A, see me personally and speak with me, but also to be on site and understand and feel and touch what we're trying to create here. Out of the 250 letters that were sent out, seven letters were represented at that neighborhood meeting. So we had some great dialogues with the folks that did participate. Commissioner Howe had an opportunity to participate and, and be in attendance. And I think from our perspective, those are the kind of efforts we're trying to make to assure that we're being a good neighbor, we're developing this property responsibly and to address the concerns. There were a couple of things that came up at that discussion that I feel are noteworthy and would respectfully request that the commissioners consider some changes to the resolution that is in front of you today. One of them primarily, and I believe this was just, just not clear in our application, is according to the max floor area ratio, we could build up to 105,000 square feet of buildable area here. That is not our intentions and that is based upon a calculation of 35% ratio. We respectfully request your consideration to lower that ratio to 10%. Another concern that was brought up in one of my discussions with one of the neighbors on site is commercial lighting. You know, is this going to look like a, you know, Walmart parking lot with tall poles and a lot of beam lighting? And our intentions in building this structure and, and developing this is to do a residential style construction that will blend into the surroundings, not just the house that's currently on the property, but the surrounding area. And consistent with the residential style construction is residential style lighting on the property. Downlighting in the eaves, landscape lighting, uplighting on trees that are appealing and, and pleasurable to the eye as you drive by it and not a, a flashing sign of an Applebee's or a Walmart. Given that, thank you for your consideration. I'll stand for questions if anybody has any.
Very good. Any questions from Mr. Estreline? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you for your testimony this morning. I have a couple of questions. Some of the email I received, talking about things like four story hotels, restaurants, things like that. How, how do we know this, those type of things are not going to happen here? Is there something in writing in this proposal today that limits that type of plan?
Yeah, I, I could let our engineer speak on that specifically, on the logistics, but that is not the intention. I, I believe the intentions or the questions about that come from the nature of our core business, which is developing, building and operating hotels across the nation. But that is, and we've built restaurants historically as well, but that, that's not the intention here and I don't know if you'd like more clarification, I can ask our engineer to speak on that.
It'd be fine for him to speak, whenever that's fine. I just wanted to say, is there something in the, in the, in the material backup today? Say, let's say you had a change of heart. Today, your plan is to do a 12,000 square foot office building for 20 of your employees. But let's say down the road, you decide, you know what, I'd rather build a hotel here.
Mm-hmm.
Is there something in this proposal today that would allow you to do that or prevent you?
I don't believe there's anything that would allow.
Scott, what do you want to say as well? Go ahead.
I can jump in and help on that. Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. So in the general provisions of the PUD, item five that Scott mentioned, we had listed several prohibited uses. In that is hotels and motels are prohibited. We don't have restaurants. Would be glad to add restaurants to that list. But if, if you read general provision five, it lists everything and hotels and motels was on that list.
I, I might ask if it's a friendly amendment to add the, the word restaurants. Again, not saying that I think is planned, but just in case you had a change of heart.
Not an issue.
I think that, you know, to the, to the concern of the neighbors, that might be a reasonable friendly amendment we could add at some point during the consideration today.
We would be happy to do that.
All right. All right. I didn't mean to, I was, I hate to say this, but I was, I was multi fast, I was multi, doing things in my head here. Did you talk about parking today? What plan is on the parking?
I did not. If, if we could pull up our site plan again, I'm not sure. If we could pull up our site plan again, I'm not sure, Scott, how to...
This gets into the issue of hard surface, you know, rainwater runoff type of thing. What's the plans?
Yeah, right.
Let's talk about, you know, how much water we're in the shed, and I might be getting Scott up here at some point, our stormwater engineer at some point. But I understand there's that much asphalt, and which way the water will flow from there. I guess that seems to be one of the biggest concerns I've heard from a lot of the folks. It deals with the potential threat of flooding, so I wanted to address how much hard surface there is, and what is the plan for that runoff?
Yeah, I'll let Phil talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, so if this zoning is approved, then one of the next requirement we'll have to do is go through the plating process. During that plating process, we're going to have to create a drainage plan that is approved by the city or county. We could annex at some point. We've not made that decision, whether we're going to annex. This site can stay in the county and work for us. We're going to use public infrastructure for sewer and water. We will do detention on any water runoff from a hard surface before it enters the stream system that runs through this site. So I think what you're asking is, we will be due to detention and releasing that into it per county standards.
Okay. All right. That's all my questions for now. I might reserve the right to ask you for more questions in the future, but thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions? Anyone else for public comment? Morning, sir. Name an address, and the clerk will give us five minutes.
Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Kent Knoller. I live at 1504 South Spring Hollow Circle, Wichita. And thank you for the time. I do have one quick question regarding this chart and showing of the protest within the calculated area. My question is, is only the areas that are in the county allowed the 1,000-foot? Because we have 1,000 feet of petitioners who signed to the east also, and only the first 100 feet is included. This is a county issue, so I do have some question about the petitions that were allowed according to this chart. I just want to say that I deeply respect Nick and what he's trying to do and his proposal. He's caught in a very precarious situation here, in my opinion, and we have shared a tremendous amount of information, as has become available, and as we have researched concerning the floodplain and the water runoff, not just into his property, but through his property. The proposal that you're seeing here is to elevate the parking lot in the building so that it's not down in the floodplain. The information that we've shared with you from FEMA, the director of FEMA, and the state representatives are that we're in a situation where we're seeing rapidly expanding floodplains as we speak. That's partly because of their assessments, very real scientific assessments, that we are seeing global warming. It's affecting evaporation, it's affecting rain weather patterns, in some cases drastically. That is not taken into account in a 100-year floodplain that's shown in these charts. It's not Nick's fault, it's not our fault, it's just the circumstance that we're in, a very rapidly changing environmental situation. The other thing is, there is a lot of research nationwide that raising elevations within floodplains is not a good practice. It's not a good practice for the floodplain, and it's definitely not a good practice for the surrounding property owners and the effect on their property and raising water levels. We have provided and cited ample information. Would be happy to cite more. It's available. I have talked to city-county engineers and FEMA engineers. They are aware, because they meet nationally, there are workshops they attend, they're very aware of what's going on environmentally, and how it's affecting us also. They feel, for whatever reasons, that they don't have the impact that they should have in the decisions. They feel like they're obligated to recommend approval, in spite of evidence to the contrary. I just want to raise that with you. I would like to defer, even though we lose an advantage maybe in a vote. This isn't about a win. This is about us facing the reality of the situation we're in, and any change within the watershed and the floodplain is a negative change at this point. And I'm just asking you to study this, not only for our benefit, but for the whole community and the situation that we're all going to be in because of the changing weather patterns. And do you have any questions?
Okay. Thank you for your comment and your insight. Any questions specifically, and then we can for sure get some clarity on the questions that you had asked. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to ask you, I guess, to clarify, you had a number of concerns initially, and you talked about a lot of different things based on maybe some more detail that's come out from the applicant. Is your primary concern still the flooding aspect? That's your number one. Is there any? Am I right about that? And the other concerns that you've expressed in the past, have they been satisfied, basically? I mean, there's concerns about wildlife, there's concerns about the, you know, doesn't match the area, surrounding area, for example. There's a number of concerns that I think you and others have raised. Are all your concerns now allayed except for this issue of flooding?
No, Commissioner. The Harry Street issue is still of a great concern, because it is substandard at this point, and adding any kind of commercial, actually, any additional construction at this point, I think, is very risky. It's already a high-risk thoroughfare. We are very concerned about the flooding issue, because a number of the people that signed petitions have residents along this, what used to be a country creek, and has now been turned into a floodway, and is virtually being used as an above-ground storm sewer. And we feel like that's in violation of owner's, property owner's land over civil rights and constitutional rights, and I included that in some of the information I submitted. That's not Nick's fault. That has nothing to do with Nick.
I am parsing words exactly. Again, I'm dissecting exactly what you're saying.
Yes.
You used the word "high-risk" just a second ago, without reference as to what is high-risk. And you mentioned some more issues about flooding just a moment ago. So, again, my question is, is flooding and the concern of stormwater runoff, is that your primary concern today, or is there something other than that that you're now concerned about?
Within the time that I had, I wanted to address the primary thing.
You're free to answer my questions as much as you need. My question is very simple. What's your main concern? I understand the issue of flooding. That's true. You've mentioned that numerous times.
All right.
What else is there that you're concerned about?
You could go back to the picture that was given on Harry Street. It shows culverts on either side of Harry Street, very quick drop-offs, no center division, there's no walkways, there's no room for error, and people driving down Harry Street. We've submitted photographs of the buses stopping on Harry. There is, by federal highway standards and state highway standards, for the kind of traffic, this is a substandard street. It's narrow, there's no shoulders, there's no walkways, there's no room for any kind of error. And we're going to have people, additional people, pulling out. And I really believe that until the proposed 2027 improvements are made to Harry Street, that there shouldn't be any additional development or additional traffic entering, particularly in this area. This is one of the most dangerous areas of Harry Street at this point.
So let me just restate what you said, see if you agree. Your secondary concern is issue of traffic, increase in traffic.
Yes, sir.
That's accessing this parcel, and you're concerned about, well, that's going to create unsafe situations on Harry Street.
Yes, and already unsafe.
Okay, so at some point, I'm not sure Public Works is in the room, but I may ask Public Works to comment on the configuration of this street and traffic counts and that type of thing. So I may get to that in a few minutes. Is there anything else that you're concerned about? You mentioned two now. What else are you concerned about?
Those are probably the two main, other than, I think, the issue of, that Nick addressed, limiting the building size and putting that into the proposed change, I think is a good positive step. The problem with that is the assumption that raising the elevation, changing the water flow, is going to solve the problem. The ponds that are here are dealing with the water flow coming through culverts across Harry Street onto the property. These ponds basically just handle the water flow there already. So by building a 12,000-square-foot building and an equal-sized parking lot is just going to overflow the ponds.
Okay.
And they dump right into the creek. This creek runs through the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Knoller. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Jim, for your questions. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, why don't we have Kirk? Scott, can you give some clarity to the question that was asked about the protest area, county versus city?
Certainly. Commissioners Kirk, Sponso W County Councilor. This is a statutory directive, and in terms of the protest area, it actually follows along with the notice area requirements. And in the case of notice areas for the unincorporated area, it's 1,000 feet, but notice of a county's action shall extend 200 feet into those areas where the notice area extends within the corporate limits of a city. So that's why you see the distinguishment between the 1,000 feet for the unincorporated area versus the reduction to just 200 feet for the notice area within the city. So that's the distinguishment there.
Okay.
And also, while I'm up here, if I could briefly address Commissioner Howe's prior concern about restaurants. So part of the PUD's analysis is the underlying uses of the underlying districts. In this case, we're looking at the general office. Restaurants already are not permitted within the general office district, so we don't need to put that limitation within the text.
Thank you.
Okay. There's also been several conversations and a lot of feedback on the flooding conversation. Scott is here. Commissioner Howe, you can kind of, if you'd like to...
I'd like to maybe finish the public comment, and then get into our staff expertise and provide technical comments.
I'm okay with that. I was trying to address the specific questions that were asked by Kent.
Chairman, okay, either way. Thank you so much.
Why don't we hold and see if there's any other public comment here in regards to this application? Thank you, sir. Hi, good morning. Name an address for the record, and our clerk will give us five minutes.
I didn't expect to be here. I didn't think we'd have public comment. John Pike is my name. We live at 13050 East Harry, which is about three lots to the west, and my back boundary is Four Mile Creek and that sort of thing. It may be slightly off-topic. We talked about ex parte. Ryan, you won't remember me, but my oldest son, David, played baseball with you for years up at Wichita Heights League.
Yes.
And it's nice to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations on your...
Thank you, sir. I look quite a bit different than I did back then.
Not really. No. No, you've kept your hair. What can I say? My thing about this application is not about flooding. That's not an irrelevant comment. Kent's done a lot of work on that. Mine is, for lack of a better way, just the philosophy of how you handle zoning. Zoning is can get contentious, there's a lot of national views about, but this zoning exists, and I would guess that most of the people, and that's a lot of people, surrounding this area, the whole neighborhood, bought their houses knowing this was almost totally single-family zoning. It's a thriving neighborhood. Houses are being improved all over the place. We have had twice in the last two or three years efforts to insert commercial things. A private storage facility on 127th just south of Harry, the city commission voted that down unanimously. Also, a rock crusher that wanted to be installed on Pawnee and 143rd. That one didn't get anywhere after the applicant told us there wouldn't be any dust in the air. I remember that one. We love the area, that's why we're there. The very things the gentleman talked about what attracted him. We understand, well, it attracted, I would say, hundreds of people there. I don't understand the idea of finding a place you really like, and the first thing you'd, and you spend nearly $2 million to buy it knowing what the zoning is, and the first thing you do is file an application to insert a use that would not be permitted. You find a place you like, and the first thing you do is start trying to change it because you want it different. Read the website. These are not bad people. I have no animosity toward them at all. It appears they've had a very successful outfit. Their website talks about, we value the people, we value the community, the area, we want to bring value. What value does this bring, other than justify their investment? These are sophisticated folks. They understand that they came in here and immediately want to change it, want to insert a commercial building right smack in the middle of a large neighborhood that's single-family. And I don't understand why the commission would consider that a good idea. It will insert the camel's nose under the tent, I think is the expression, that we've fought before and said, no. It's as simple as that. We don't understand it. We think you owe at least as much consideration to the neighborhood as to the applicant. There was something in the MAPC report about, well, this could be a financial hazard or detriment to the applicant, because they just spent a lot of money to buy this. Well, what about the rest of us? We deserve the same consideration. We don't know what the financial impact would be to the property values. We don't know that. But I don't see any way it increases the neighborhood and benefits the neighborhood. And neighborhoods are not a bad thing. Appreciate your time. Thanks. Any questions? Feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pike, thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you, and we had not, I never got notice of the public meeting that was talked about here, so, but maybe...
That was one of my first questions, was the applicant sent out, according to his testimony, sent out letters to the same homes that apparently had protested, I think is what he...
I filed a protest, but I'm outside the area. However, I was at the MAPC meeting and signed up for notice. I never received anything.
Okay.
I've monitored. I drive by this property every day.
Yeah.
And that sort of thing.
Initially, I had some alarming emails about, you know, building a 100,000-square-foot building, and it's going to be four stories tall, it's going to have, you know, could be apartment complexes, it could be thousands of cars in and out. There's all kinds of things I heard.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Again, I think the intent is, when I spoke with him, I'm not trying to speak for him, but the intent is, I believe, around 20 employees or so will office there, so they'll arrive in the morning, leave in the evening, and maybe some of them will go to lunch. So the number of cars per day is pretty low. He plans on keeping it nature-esque, if you will, keep the trees, he's going to add an orchard, I understand, and there should be deer and turkeys and owls and all kinds of things on the property.
All of those things are present, yeah.
The ponds will actually be increased in size so they can handle more runoff. So I guess, from what he talked about.
Yes.
It seems to me like this is actually, in many ways, not, it doesn't seem to fit some of the concerns that I heard from a lot of people about the speculation of what they thought this was going to be, and what it turned out to be, the reality is much, much different. So it's curious, have you, you own the property just slightly to the west of this, is that correct?
We're west about three lots. Yeah, we have seven acres between Harry and Four Mile Creek.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I don't know that you'll be able to see it, because you're far enough to the west.
Probably not. Driving by, I probably would be able to. From my house, I don't expect to be able to see it.
You really can't see this from Harry unless you stop and look closely.
Pretty close.
You have to stop to really look at. When you're driving down here, you won't even see it.
That's correct. I think you're right.
And so I guess I just, to your concerns, I don't know the, I'm not sure what is so egregious, you know, in terms of how it's going to look and what they're going to be doing there. It doesn't seem, you use the word "commercial building." It is commercial because it's a business.
It is.
But they're not manufacturing anything. They're not, there's not going to be noise emanating. They're not going to, you know, there's no, it's not a lot of things. It's simply an office building. So I guess it seems, in fact, the rendering of that building looks kind of like a house. So, and the house, instead of the plan of leaving that house there.
There's a large home there and a, and an indoor like gymnasium almost, or whatever it is there, then that's fine.
Those things are planning to stay on the property. If I, I talked to Nick, that's what he said. I am, I am, just want to make sure that you have a, a good understanding exactly what has been proposed here. Because some of the early ideas were alarming and what things actually are. A lot of the folks, I think, that had concerns have kind of disappeared. They've not, they've not, they don't seem to have the same concerns they did early.
This may not be fair, but I would see, number one, it's, it's a workday in the morning. A lot of those people work and they can't be here. I think a lot of them left the MAPC meeting thinking, what's the point? We're not going to get anywhere because the MAPC recommends most things that they're suggesting.
I'm sorry that they felt that way.
People do.
We are very, we were very, want to hear from both sides. We want to make sure we find the right balance between property owners to do what's best for both sides, but-
I just come back again to saying, why was this whole area zoned, single family? And why do you want to change it now? Because whether they build it, a very pleasant building, they, there is a change here. There's a philosophical change, Shane, that it's a good idea to insert something that you couldn't build now. Your own rules would prohibit it now. And, and it could be that you made a decision, it's okay. What, what do we say next time? And I also don't really understand the PUD, which is the least supervised, what's the word, regulation. And if you look carefully, things can change in a PUD to a certain level without us even being told it's happening. Major changes, no, we'd be told again. We don't understand that. You know, again, this is not a criticism of TGC. They're very sophisticated. They're smart people. They know exactly what they're doing. This is not a landowner who suddenly decided he wanted to move a garage too close to a setback line or whatever. This is, this is not the same.
I'm not going to spend time to answer the question today, but I, there is, there is an answer to the question as to why zoning changes. Maybe you and I can have a cup, a cup of coffee later on. We'll just discuss that, maybe one on one. But thank you for your comments this morning.
Thanks. Take care.
Thank you, sir. Any others for public comment? Want to make sure that we, okay. So officially close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the bench for questions or comments. Commissioner Howen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to bring up a couple of people to talk about some of the, some of the comments that have been stated thus far. I'd like to ask our stormwater engineer, Scott Lindaback, would you be wanting to come answer a few questions for me, please?
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Scott Lindaback, Stormwater Management.
Okay. So I understand that when the plat is filed, that's when the, the topographical changes that are necessary on this property will be part of that plan. So the water flow, where it flows today and how it flows once this is developed may be different. Can you please explain what I'm talking about?
Yes. The Segey County has stormwater regulations that were initiated in 2010 and that requires when there's an acre of imperviousness, like a parking lot or a building or a rooftop, that detention is required for a new site. And detention is basically the, the reduction of runoff to predeveloped conditions. And the other issue is the floodplain, that spring branch that runs through there. There's been about three studies in the last 25 years of spring branch. There's one that's ongoing currently today by Kent's Department of Agriculture. And they, they're monitoring the floodplain and, and the elevations in this watershed. But we would require that any structure that gets built with the plating process is elevated at least two feet above the, the floodplain. And then any fill that's placed in the floodplain, the state doesn't require this, but our local regulations do require this. We require compensatory storage. So they'd have to take, for every scoop of dirt that they place in the floodplain, they'd have to take a scoop out somewhere within that same connected hydrology.
In this case, I think the natural flow of water today would be to the north and to the east where the subject structure will be built. I've been told by the applicant that they intend to have the water flow basically to the, to the south of the property in those two ponds, at least the one pond that's kind of to the, to the southwest of the parking lot. That would have to be enlarged to be more of a retention pond that'll hold water and meter that out. If there's excessive water, it'll meter that out at a safe rate so that, again, that water will not flow to the residential properties to the, to the north and to the east. It'll flow to the south instead. I don't understand exactly how that works, but I'm sure you have an idea. Can you please help me understand it better?
Yeah, right now, there's two water, two drainage structures that drain under Harry that drain to the north towards Spring Branch. And there's an auxiliary spillway that drains to the east of the, of the large east detention pond. There'd be, probably there'd be, their drainage engineer, whoever plats this, plats this property, will come up with a, a design. All, all end up reviewing that design, but we'll end up probably requiring some kind of drainage structure to be placed to the, to the north towards Spring Branch that would slowly meter out that water over an extended period of time.
And I don't know if I heard it or not, but the parking lot appears to be about the same size as that structure. That's, let's say that's roughly 25,000 square feet of impervious spaces where the water will not soak into the, into the ground. It'll be runoff. At 25,000 square feet roughly, just off the top of my head there, relevant to the rest of the property that drains to that area, how, how big of a percentage or how, how much of a threat does that add to downstream structures by essentially, again, it may not, it may not, that water may not flow quickly because it's going to be slowed down. It eventually does have to flow out, but-
There'll be more runoff, but it'll be, it'll be slowed down to a, to a, to a discharge amount that's not going to be negligible for the overall watershed that drains there today.
And your, and your expertise and your professional opinion, does this, does this addition add risk to those homes that are directly to the east of the subject property? There's a number of homes there. Is there any way that you can see that this will add any type of risk to those homes on the east property line?
No, properly mitigated, it's not going to add any additional impact to the properties to the east.
They have some water flowing up and down that east property line currently that flows towards the north. I don't know why that does that, but anyway, down that north property line, right, right where, to the, to the, looks like to the east of the, of the larger pond, there's water that collects and flows towards the north. And it's enough water that some of the folks that live along that line right there are currently experiencing concerns about water infiltration up into their properties and possibly even into their basements because some of that water is, is going into the ground and creating, if you will, underground pressures, if you will. So is there anything about this that would add any type of risk to those folks with that, with that knowledge?
Well, groundwater or, this, the plating process deals with surface water drainage only. It doesn't address groundwater issues. And I know that this, what's occurring today groundwater wise, probably won't, won't substantially be changed with this development. So I don't see there being a, an issue with people's basement, some pumps and stuff like this related to this development.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's my last question for Scott. I would like to ask Public Works. Does anybody else want to talk to Scott before I?
Anything for Scott?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Scott Lindaback. Appreciate your expertise. I'd like to ask our Public Works Director to come up and talk about Harry Street traffic. There was, Lynn Packer, there was some concerns given about the, the impact of traffic on Harry Street, that they thought that this was a substandard road. It was unsafe, the ditches and the width and the speed and number of vehicles per day that might be added by doing this. Can you please comment on any of those concerns?
Absolutely. Harry Street in this section, this mile between 127th and 143rd, our last traffic count was in 2022. That indicated about 4,700 cars a day utilizing this roadway. The majority of the mile is within the corporate limits of the city Wichita. There is about 825 feet in front of the property in question that is unannexed at this time and remains, the roadway is technically within the county limits. That's why we do have the traffic counts. But Wichita, as Mr. Knoller had noted earlier, Wichita does have a project in their current CIP for a $4.4 million project to make road improvements in 2027. I believe that is either under design or about to go under design this year. At that price, I do, I am not familiar with all the improvements they're going to make. But based on the price tag, as well as what I know what their standard designs are, they're going to widen this road to at least three lanes. They're going to replace the open ditch with storm sewer, curb and gutter, and half turn lanes in there. Given that the size of the building and the number of employees that are anticipated, it will have no measurable effect on traffic in the area, even with additional potential visitors. So I think the timing of the project is, is well because by the time anything is done here and with that project, if it stays on track, even if it is pushed out, we do have improvements right around, around the corner.
All right. That's really, you answered my question very well. Thank you so much.
Can I, Lynn, can I ask one? Thanks for letting me interrupt. I was, when I was at the city, I was very familiar with the three lane expansion on Harry. And I learned a lot about traffic flowing or traffic comforting or whatever, that a three lane road, I had no idea at the time.
Traffic calming, yes.
Was it traffic calming?
Calming.
There you go. That's the term. And, and I drive that, that, from 143rd, I drive that Harry Street a lot coming in to when I go to the southeast part of the town. But that, and I always think of that when I see that section that's three lane and I see the, the turn lanes and the, and the dry, and the sidewalks and, and so, and I would know that, that the city of Wichita has done similar stuff on the, on the west side of town. And so as much as I was not in favor of three lane traffic calming roads, I do see the positive outcome of what they do, especially when the turn lanes and the medians with the, so, and if, I'm thankful, I did not know that the CIP for the city had probably, I assume it'll be very similar, a three lane world.
Yes, they'll have a sidewalk and a bike path, one side of the road, as well as a curb and gutter, if they do, if they stick to their standard design that they've been doing in this area.
Yeah. And what, what year was that scheduled?
2027 is the slated, as of last year's CIP, updated the CIP.
Is that a whole city thing or just, is it WAMPO involved as well?
My understanding is, I'm trying to recall the WAMPO because I'm on the selection committee.
I can't remember.
I do not believe this project is in the tip.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying. So thank you. Is Jim done?
Commissioner Howen, any other questions on staff?
I have one.
Mr. Meister, yes, please.
Thank you. And Scott, thanks for the flooding and water, the water discussion. And I have a lot of respect for your experience and, and your expertise on that. There's been a lot of discussion about single family. Mr. Wadele, can I ask a question? And maybe you can pull up-
Yes, sir.
One of the, one of, maybe the protest slide? So remind me if the applicant requested to be annexed by the city?
No, to my knowledge, the applicant has not. And I think they've indicated, the agent for the applicant indicated today that they have not requested annexation.
Right. And I don't, I don't, I don't think they plan to, but if they did, if they, if, if the applicant requested to be annexed, the county does not have any say so in that. Is that correct?
It depends on how the annexation would be done. But in this case, the way that they've talked about it would be a request annexation. And in that instance, the county would not have a say in it.
Okay, that's the way I understand it too. And if it, if it would become part of the city, it automatically triggers from SF whatever to SF5?
Yes. What would happen, our typical process is that it would go from SF20 to SF5 as part of that annexation process.
Okay. And so for the, for our, so the protests of the residents on the eastern edge there, are those SF5 lots?
On the eastern edge, if we go to the zoning map, oops, I'm going the wrong direction. Here we go. So those are the ones in white here, and that is SF5 zoning.
Okay. So theoretically, and then if you go back to the overhead of the, that you can see the, the, there you go. So theoretically, those houses on the east today and under the applicant's, under the applicant's proposal, those residents are looking, would be looking at, continue to look at vacant land or whatever berms may or may not, whatever improvements for site. So they would continue to look that way. But if technically, if they wanted to pivot and go to a housing development of single family, has been talked about, a couple of people said that this should be a single family area. If it went to single family, they technically would be looking into the, a similar plot, the backyard of another housing.
I would say that, yeah.
I'm doing a little what if, but the options are there.
That could be a scenario. Yes, sir.
That could be a scenario. And then finally, on that, on that slide there, ironically, they're talking back to the, my only comment about flooding is, it, my residence, I live up in the Savannah neighborhood and there's a series of drainage ponds similar in size to this. And I was just thinking, if I was a single fam, whatever that, that address is 13, 15, the, the one at the most, maybe they say at the, at the edge of the north side there, if there was a, no, on the, whatever, the same, the same group on the east, but the far, farthest north house that's in the protest zone, I'm not sure a lot could, could fit in there. But I live in Savannah and my lot backs up to a drainage pond. And my property line actually is about three paces, because I mow it. From my property line to that is about three paces to the, to the water's edge. So for flooding, and we've had some pretty massive rain yesterday that was drainage. And we've never, lived there 20 years, haven't had any flooding, thanks to probably Scott and whoever, whoever developed that area. Thank you for not having flooding in, in my area. But the technical part of that is, I think when, when you all do this planning, that there really is, you really do control the stormwater runoff in a really good way. I know we have some low lying areas in the south part of the county that affect some of the Derby Mulvane and over in the Hayesville area. But for the most part, when it gets, when you guys get ahead of it, it works really well. And so I, I'm just thinking, I'll still evaluate all the information we've been received about potential flooding. And I see the flood map is, is at the north edge of that area. It kind of borders up to the, to some of those properties that are right there along that edge. So I'm comfortable, as of now, with the, with the flooding or the water runoff management. And I just, I wanted to point out that that what if, I think if I was a resident there, I'd sure rather look at berms and natural beauty, so to speak, versus the, the deck of a, of a person in the backyard. But that's just my observation. But thanks for clarifying.
Sure.
If in fact that goes, we do not have a say so. If, if the applicant would go annex to the city, we would not have a say so, and it would convert automatically to SF5, which is the size of those lots right there.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good questions. Appreciate the follow up. Okay. Any other questions regarding this with staff in the room?
Okay. Seeing none, as previously mentioned, since Commissioner Dennis is out, I'm going to make a motion that the board defers this matter one week to next week's Board of County Commissioners meeting taking place on May the 8th.
Yeah. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, one second. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. Just for clarification, so we're not going to do another public hearing next week. That's done. But we are, we would allow public comment. They could sign up like normal. Is that what we anticipate potentially?
Correct, sponsored by County Councilor. Yes, that is correct. The public, the public hearing for this item has been closed, but pursuant to standard practices, there is an availability for the standard public comment at the beginning of the agenda.
So based on the public hearing today and the, and the staff presentation today, are we free to start developing an opinion on this case or we have to wait till next week?
At this juncture, I would say that you have heard all the evidence presented, and so it is within your realm to, to formally start reviewing and formulating your opinions.
I just say it would be my effort to, again, to push off my conclusion as long as I can, but I, I will probably start developing a position as we get closer to next week's meeting. But I would like to invite anybody who wasn't able to make it today, who wants to come out and, and a public comment next week, could still present different information if there was something they felt like we were missing at that point. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. And to clarify, the intent of the motion is all the staff work, staff presentation, all of that is complete. And although we are not voting today, we always have the opportunity in an agenda for public comment, and always welcome public comment on this issue and others. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay. We'll defer the item one week. Okay, we, there's been a request that we take just a quick 10 minute break, so that we will resume the meeting promptly at 11:45 and work our way through the rest of the agenda.
I have a headache.
Okay, we are back live. Thank you for allowing us to take that quick break. Let's keep rolling. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Cedric County, Kansas, Creating New Policies and Procedures Regarding Community Program Funding Requests.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman, thank you. I would like to defer this for one week so we have a full board. It's two policies. You'll have to vote between two policies, which you want, so asking for a deferral for one week.
Yeah. Any questions or comments on that deferral? I'm inclined to make a motion if there are none. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to defer item L, which is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, creating new policies and procedures regarding community program funding requests. Defer this conversation until next Board of County Commissioner meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Item M, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
And here he is, Mr. Brent Shelton.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. Presenting this morning the Quarterly Financial Report for the first quarter of 2024. This represents our fiscal activities in comparison to the same time period for the previous year. Just quick reminders that the report and the presentation are prepared by budget and accounting professionals. I owe them a debt of gratitude for their work. That the information is based on audited financial statements, subject to minor revisions when we go through the audit. You've received a copy of the report. It'll be posted online at the conclusion of today's remarks. I will tell you that not just because of the time constraints today, but we've done a little bit of revamping of this. There are fewer slides today than you're used to. If the mouse works, we'll move forward. There we go. As we typically do with this, we take a look at our anticipated year-end fund balance changes across the operating funds of the county. We've done some consolidation on this slide. And if we move from left to right, what you'll see are planned changes in those fund balances. In the funds with a property tax levy, we're anticipating about a $6 million increase in fund balance on a year-over-year basis. Investment returns are one of the primary drivers of that. Funds that without a property tax support are anticipated to reduce in their fund balance by about $24 million. These are the funds within which ARPA revenues and expenditures occur. As you know, there haven't been ARPA revenues for the last couple of years, but those expenditures continue. The Fire District plans to make a transfer into their Equipment Reserve Fund of $2 million, resulting in a fund balance reduction there. And some additions to the fleet will result in about a $900,000 reduction in the Enterprise and Internal Service Funds. So all in all, planned reductions of about $21 million across all the county's operating funds. Let's take a little deeper dive into the county's property tax-supported funds. And typically, we have shown you revenues on one slide and expenditures on another. We've combined those now to give a little bit clearer depiction of what happens in the first quarter in terms of revenues and expenditures. You'll notice the gap, revenues over expenses. It's a result of the way that these funds are funded through property tax revenues that were received in the first parts of the year and then spent down throughout the year. So we want to see a healthy gap between revenues and expenses in these first three months. There are some slight increases, both in revenues and expenses, from a little higher property tax rate levy and personnel expenditure increases in these funds. Here's some of those details that show that 6% or roughly $6 million in additional property taxes have been collected and distributed year-to-date. Some slight reductions in our sales and use taxes, and then that increase in investment income that we'll talk about in a little more detail as we get further through the report. Expenditures in these funds with a property tax levy, you'll see as a result of focusing on some of the compensation issues and providing support there, we're seeing pretty much across the board increases in our personnel expenditures with the exception of overtime, just as we would expect to see. Outside of personnel expenditures, there's really nothing of surprise with the first-quarter results. We're seeing some timing changes on some of the grant awards. The biggest area that I would point out is in that second line, the fee-for-service contracts. Couple of things are happening here as a result of reduced inmate population. The sheriff is spending less money for out-of-county housing costs. There was a big software project that was deferred into next year for the financial software, and so that's resulted in a reduction of expenditures first quarter this year. Taking a moment to look at the Fire District, this Fire District is in many ways a microcosm of the county fiscally in terms of how it's funded. Funded with property tax, it comes in in the early part of the year and is spent down throughout the year. So we want to see that gap between revenues and expenditures early in the year. They too have experienced increase in property tax and some personnel expenses. So here's the detail within the Fire District, about a 6% increase in tax revenues, and then increases in personnel as a result of their new step pay plan, those changes. They've purchased more cash-funded equipment earlier this year than they did at the same time last year. All in all, pretty much planned and expected expenditures so far year-to-date. The county also has about 36 different operating funds for which there is not dedicated property tax levy. Now, this slide is different than what you've seen before. We've combined four slides into one that basically shows you revenues with and revenues without the federal stimulus dollars. It also shows you the expenditures of those same funds in total, as well as expenditures that do not include those stimulus expenditures. This is a snapshot in time of the first quarter of the year, and the reason that the revenue lines, which are the bottom two, they start out on the bottom, run concurrent, whether it's with or without federal stimulus dollars, is we never received any of those in the first quarter. So we receive those funds second and third quarters of the year. This slide will be a little clearer when we get further along in the year, but I just want to make sure you understand, expenses of those funds are on that top blue line because we're spending last year's money earlier in the year than what we've actually received. Let me pause for just a minute because this one's quite a bit different than what you've seen. Any questions about that?
No. Good job, Brent.
Okay. We are seeing increases in revenue over the last couple of years in these funds, primarily driven from the new billing model, the CCBHC billing model and comcare. And you can see continued increases on that top line, about 12% additional first quarter this year over last. We've received some additional revenues from KDads. One of the components of that is the beginning of some funding for the state mental health hospital. Otherwise, pretty much things here as planned in these funds as well. Expenditures in these funds.
Brent, one second. Commissioner Meitzner.
Brent, the state mental health hospital, this is, this money was just mainly for our initial expenses.
Right.
To the tune of about how much?
I believe it was less than $100,000.
About $100,000.
It was a small amount, but that's just one of the items that occurred in there. So we're starting to see.
So that was just that. So again, we're not, we're not involved in funding the state mental health hospital. That's totally a state.
No change there.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Continue on, sir.
Expenditures in these funds represent continued focus on those compensation issues. Over the last couple of years, we're seeing higher expenses for salaries and employee benefits. Because of the CCBHC billing model, more, more services are being performed and contracted out. So those Medicaid pass-through payments continue to increase on a year-over-year basis. Our next slide shows the swings in fund balances at the end of the quarter as a result of property tax collections in the first two quarters of the year, and then those funds are spent down in the third and fourth quarter. If you'll note, the red font, that shows you the fund balances for the first quarter, and you'll see just a gradual uptick. That's your comparison point to the prior year. We have also shown a second slide. It's, we've kind of combined it at this point, but as you know, county policy requires that we have a minimum unrestricted fund balance of 20% of our general fund budget, budgeted expenditures. That equates to about $60 million this year. We have exceeded that consistently year-over-year. A quick look at our investment portfolio, which is about $13 million at the end of March of '24 than it was in March of 2023. But on a little smaller portfolio, we earned $4.2 million as compared to $2.4 million for the same time period last year. So it's up about $1.8 million. Our current yield on the portfolio is 2.8%. That compares to 1.8% the year before. So we're seeing increasing active, or increasing returns with the investment portfolio as rates remain fairly constant. Let's take a quick look at some capital improvement projects occurring around the county. First one would be the first tour facilities projects. Both of them are nearing completion next month. The main courthouse cooling towers are operational. There's some final connections being made there, but most of that money has been committed. The secure parking at the Public Safety Building is primarily completed, the fencing's up, waiting on gates and so forth. At this time, to complete that next month. Drainage project southwest of Hayesville is estimated to be completed this month. I think seeding and grading are the last two pieces of that to be done. Public Works provided some pictures of the next two projects, the first one being the Nenetska River Bridge on 151st Street, just south of Clearwater. That's being reconstructed. You can see before that project began and some of the work that's going on to date with that project. And then B-512, which is a bridge project we have discussed before, that's the rehabilitation of the bridge on Zoo Boulevard that goes over the Mitch Mitchell floodway. That began, as you know, the day after Zubilee last year. They're in the third or fourth phases of that work. That's a KDOT-administered project with some grant funding, and you can see here some pictures before and where they are today with that project, which is anticipated to complete in August of this year. So finally, if I would sum it up with some key points, I would tell you that because of year-over-year consistency and the way that we try to be stewards of public funds, the county fiscal condition remains sound. There are continued pressures outside of our control. Inflation seems to have moderated. CPI was 3.5% as of March 31st of 2024. It's been higher than that in prior years, but it's not quite low enough for the Fed to begin doing some easing of, of interest rates. Unemployment has held pretty steady across the state from one year to the next, 3.8% versus 3.7% a year ago. So pretty consistent there as well. We continue to monitor federal and state legislative decisions that might have a fiscal impact on the county. As we move into budget season, we always have that challenge of finding the sweet spot between the citizens' expectations for services and their desire for us to hold the line on property tax and expenditures. A lot of workforce challenges have been met. We see some reduced vacancies as compensation improvements have been made across the county. We look to take advantage of technology in terms of improving efficiencies and effectiveness, and at the same time, being aware of those potential cyber threats that begin. They're more and more sophisticated as we move forward. And finally, a new item this quarter is housing. That has become a bigger and bigger topic throughout the county as we look at potential housing stock shortages, the affordability gap, homelessness, and housing instability issues. So that's another thing that will have an impact on us as we move forward. All in all, I would say that the county is in a strong position to meet the challenges. I would stand for any questions, and at the conclusion of those, I would recommend that you receive and file the quarterly financial report.
Very good. Okay, Brent, thank you for that information and your team in finance for the work they've done to accumulate this report. Any questions or comments for Brent? It always jumps off the chart, the investment income. It's still rather significant, so that's an encouraging sign. Okay, thank you, Brent.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, I'll make a motion to receive and file the quarterly financial report.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item M, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on April 25th, 2024.
There he is, Joe Thomas. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of April 25th was a pretty busy one. We have 10 items for you this afternoon. First one is the Change Order Number One for Health Department Facility Improvements for the Project Services. This recommendation is to approve Change Order Number One, and that's in the amount of $94,836.95. Our second item, 2024 BM overlays, which is Project R175E for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Conspec Incorporated. They're doing business as Kansas Paving in the amount of $1,061,125.25. Item number three, Rachel Brook Estates, addition drainage and infrastructure improvements for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Linger and Sons Construction Company in the amount of $1,3057.40. Item number four, Rachel Brook Estates. This is the Suburban Street Construction Phase One for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction, LLC, and that's in the amount of $571,409. Item number five is Records Retrieval System, District Attorney's Office. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Records Retrieval Systems Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $101,607.66. Item number six, two each of the 3/4-ton four-wheel-drive, single-wheel, rear axle, crew cab, standard bed trucks for fleet management and emergency medical services. That recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Hatton Chevrolet, and that's in the amount of $106,906. Item number seven, is that correct? Yeah. Item number seven, which is the On Base Maintenance and Support for Division Information Technology, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Conica Minolta Business Solutions USA Incorporated in the amount of $267,621.20. Item number eight is SAP S4 Upgrade for Enterprise Resource Planning, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from SAP Public Services Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $3,356,771.1, and that's for a period of five years. Item number nine, SAP Arriba Cloud Services for Enterprise Resource Planning. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Phoenix Business Incorporated. They're doing business as Phoenix Business Consulting, and that's in the amount of $376,169.67. And our final item is Law Enforcement Ammunition for the Sheriff's Office. We're recommending to utilize State of Kansas Contract 55468, which is good through December 31st of 2029. This one has two one-year options to renew, and that's with Sunset Law Enforcement LLC. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, or staff is here to do that, and we recommend approval.
Okay, bid board was busy. 10 items on the report today. Thank you, Joe. Questions or comments? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. On the first item, there's a comment in the middle about it has to be approved by the state of Kansas. Curiously, is that because it's their project, or is that because, are they paying for it? What's, why do they have oversight on these decisions?
That was based on a grant from the state of Kansas.
This is grant-funded?
Yes.
So this 11% change, you know, I guess it's a change order, adds 11% cost. Some of these things on here, I'm not, again, I guess I don't know, I, I don't know if I have a long-term understanding exactly what our plan is with the Health Department going forward. So we're continuing to invest money to improve the current site, and I'm just wondering if that makes sense, if we had a plan at some point to do something different with the Health Department, some different, I mean, there's been, there's been discussions for years. So it just seems to me like we're, we're continuing to improve this particular site, so I'm wondering if that makes sense.
Mr. Kaufman.
Few people here that can help. Andrew, why don't you start us off?
Andrew Dill, Director of Facilities. There are some potentials for out there, outlining in the future on what's going to occur with this facility, but nothing's been determined yet. We have no official agreements or anything set in stone on what the future of this facility holds. So at the current moment, the Health Department has a grant to. That's all right. Improve some of the, the facility here, improve some of the, the infrastructure. And the good chunk of this grant went into CIP issues, or things that we had scheduled on the CIP for this facility, things like updating the fire alarm, the electrical service, things that were necessary, the HVAC system, just so we could occupy it the next few years, depending on what the future holds.
Okay, so my, I guess, so my, my thought is, because we don't know the future, we're going to go in to make these improvements, and also since it's, it's their money, I guess. That's the second part of that question, second part of that comment.
Correct, and that's why it has the state approval, subject to the state approval.
All right. A couple of other questions. See here, this may not be for you. Item five, I guess we're using ARPA funds for the, yes, the, the document.
Yes, for the retrieval system, this is ARPA-funded. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll just make a comment. Again, this is so not COVID, I'm sorry. It just drives me, it, it's driving me crazy that we continue to have money designated for COVID response, and it's doing things like this. And this may be the way to spend that money down, I guess. Maybe we need it. But I just have concerns about the connection between COVID recovery, if you will, and, and this type of spend, this type of spending. Go ahead.
I'm inviting myself to the podium.
Please, yes, sir.
Lindsay Porus, so you're CFO. So bear in mind that ARPA was intended to be a recovery bill, whereas CARES was the response bill. So this is associated with ARPA because it is setting up the DA to be successful in our newly remodeled courthouse. So it's tied to that whole court backlog initiative, and that's how it is tied to COVID, because that court backlog was driven by COVID. So I just want that on the record.
Okay. And then also the C in the, in the CAD, the C is a electronic documentation, correct?
That's my understanding.
So why, this is a physical documentation, physical storage system, if you will. So we have physical storage of electronic documents. Tense?
No, these, I believe, are physical documents that are in that, yeah. I'll let Mr. Waller answer that question.
Hi, John Waller with District Attorney's Office. Yeah, these are actually, this is a file storage system for our physical case files. We've not gone paperless yet. We want to move in that direction, but there's a large amount of files that we have stored in various places around the courthouse, and this is giving us a much larger records area, so we have more file storage availability.
All right, well, thank you. The DA needs it. I won't report it. Next question would be, the one vehicle we're replacing here has 17.8 points, it's 103,000 miles. That's a little high points for a little miles. I'm just curious, is this something specific about that vehicle that's?
Mr. Bo Bergeron is Bergeron, sorry. I'm messing up your name, Bo.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's more than just the overall mileage, I believe, that goes into this point system.
I only have one more question after this one.
Yes, sir, that's all right.
Sorry.
Hey, Bo, thank you.
Buggers Run Fleet. That is one of their staff vehicles that they use for, I don't really know what all they use it for, but it is, the Suburbans and the Tahoe do not do well with all the idling they do on scene. So we have had multiple issues with it over the years.
That brings up another question, which I guess we'll get to that maybe another day.
Okay.
I guess I'm not sure why idling these vehicles is, is considering the climate and everything else people are concerned about.
It's an excellent question.
And I'm not sure what the reason is for letting it idle, but that's a policy question.
Excellent question for EMS.
Okay. That's my, that's my only question for that one. I understand, plus I know if this is EMS vehicle, they respond with earnest. They go pretty fast. So this is not driven like around the block, like you're selling candy. This is, they get on scene very quickly. These are, these are going super fast. Okay, so I'll let that one go. I only have one other question. Thank you so much. This last question deals with, the SAP stuff, it seems like every single, every single bid board we ever have had SAP software proposals to us so often. I have no sense of the overall amount of money we're spending with so many different things of software that relate to SAP and other similar types of software. This one, item number eight, is over $3.3 million. And honestly, I'm reading this, I have no idea what this even is. Sounds like it's important. One of the questions, one of the things I have on here that makes me wonder a little bit is it's migrating data is it's migrating data from an iCloud edition of S four to something else, a customization of the S four cloud. I don't even understand what this talks about. So we're, we're changing, if you will, our storage, I guess, of something. Okay, she's got, okay, please help me out.
Let Mr. Mike Elpers give you the overall view.
I can start, and then if you need help with, or have questions for finance, Lindsey is here as well. Mike Elpers, your CIO. So this item, the first one for S four, takes our current financial system, which is running on servers in our data center, and migrates it to the next generation of the same SAP system, but it's in the cloud. It's in a cloud data center run by other folks. So we lose our hardware maintenance, our capital expenditures every five to seven years to replace that hardware. And that's, that's just the, it's the next digital offering of our, of our current
Does that mean the number nine is related to this also? They're, they're tied together?
It is.
So I don't have any questions about that, then that's fine. I guess what I would ask for you, Mike and whoever, is I'd like to have maybe a, a overarching explanation as to all kinds of software that works. Because again, to my point, it seems like every, every week or two, we have got another proposal for another set of software updates. And I'm just not sure who's making decisions, whether there's any scrutiny, if there's any verification that is, are we modernizing? Are we, are we upgrading? Or is some of these things necessary? Or who's making decisions on whether it should or should not happen? You know, some of the, since almost all of this is property tax funded, I'm pretty sure. So I'm very concerned that we don't have a good understanding exactly overall how much money we're spending on software and software upgrades. So I'm okay with this one, that's, that's totally fine. Thank you again. Mr. Chairman, so my questions, I'd be glad to make a motion or somebody else can do that, that's fine.
Go ahead, Commissioner Howe.
I make a motion, we would approve of the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good work. Okay, I want to pause and call to order the governing body of Fire District number Madam Clerk?
Commissioner
First item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe.
President.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Chairman Beatty.
President. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Seeing none, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Commissioners, we've all had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item B, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Long time no see, Joe Thomas.
Been a while. For the record, Joe Thomas, person director. This particular item is the battery-powered extrication tools. This is part of the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts as Fire District number one on the same date as our others, April twenty-fifth. So these battery-powered extrication tools, the recommendation is to accept the quote from Rescue Specialist, and it's in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars. And the approval of this item is contingent on the item that's found on Consent Agenda, which is item D. So with that, I recommend approval. If you have any questions, be happy to try to answer.
Okay. And for clarity, what Joe's talking about is we're going to establish, but we're, the motion will be to establish budget authority in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars in the Fire District Special Equipment Fund. So there is a fund that's set up for this. It will pull from that fund for this equipment purchase.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, public clarity. Okay, questions for Joe on the specific item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Joe. Next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items C and D on the Fire Agenda.
Okay. Any questions on these two items on Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve items C and D on Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Sheriff Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other for the Fire District? Okay, next item.
Executive session.
There is no executive session, so I will adjourn the Fire District meeting and resume the Board of County Commissioner meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz again recommend approval of consent items O through Z on the main agenda.
Okay. O through Z, any questions on any of these consent items? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, items O through Z.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Okay, we are no legislative agenda issues that we're going to go today because we'll get a briefing from our consultants next, next meeting. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Any committee reports the Commissioners would like to share. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I just really quick wanted to mention that the Lofton Task Force met last week. It was, it's our two-year kind of update meeting, and it's going to be the last one that we have. We have, there are some members that were on the board that are serving in, in other capacities on boards at the county right now, which I'm grateful for. We did mention in the last meeting about CJCC and what that could become, and if any of them would be interested, I think that would be a really good fit for, for this group of folks. But as this is rounding out, well, first I sent you all an email with the latest, all the paperwork that we received from that
Thank you.
meeting. But as this is ending, I just want to re-thank everybody from staff and community members who took part in this. This was not something easy to get started, it was not something easy to go through, it was a very emotional topic, and rightfully so. And so I'm just, I'm really grateful for the work that happened. And we have implemented almost all of the recommendations in the ones that we haven't finished yet. The majority of those are in progress. So really seen some, some significant changes at the county level, and I'm just, I'm really grateful to have the support of the Commission. All of the staff work that's gone into this has just been incredible. And then for the community partners that have been a part of this as well, taking your time, taking time out of their lives and their busy schedules to help make our systems better is always appreciated. So I just wanted to real fast thank everybody who was involved. As we close that out, we are going to leave the dashboard up, so as updates happen, we can still make sure people are aware that won't change. And hopefully we'll still have a lot of participation going forward on other boards like CJCC and of the likes. So that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Really noted, I appreciate that. I wasn't here during the conception of the, of that task force, but I get to see the fruit. And there was a lot of transformation that came from the action items in that task force. So I think we have a better system because of the task force work. So thanks for your leadership on that. Anything else on committee reports? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Mr. Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just was, under other, I had the privilege of attending the, the opening of the Textron Global Parts Distribution Center, which looked like a small version of the Amazon warehouse that we got to tour. Anyway, Textron has combined three warehouses of parts because all of the aftermarket air industry planes that they've made over the years, the aftermarket repair and maintenance parts is a big, is a big component of what Textron does for our area, but also, I mean, worldwide. And they ship out, now, now it's all under one roof, it's out, out west there with their deal. But anyway, including in that, I, I was able to pick up a, a card that I shared with each of the Commissioners that talks about how many, you know, they have ten thousand five hundred employees in this region, which is quite a lot. Sometimes Textron goes unnoticed because we talk about Spirit being the largest employer. But really good information, and, and I just want to congratulate Textron on this combining their warehouse space and their parts distribution in the aftermarket market. So thank you for, and all of you, I think, could have been invited, but, but I did attend. And I know Commissioner Howe is aerospace interested, it was very impressive place. So anyway, so thank you.
Very good. Anything else under other? Two things I'd like to mention. The first is we start this afternoon our budget hearings, which will carry on for about a week straight. These will be pretty intense meetings. And we've talked significantly from the Commission to the Manager's Office and Communications about how do we make sure that this process is as transparent so the public can have interaction and see exactly the conversations that are going on in the room. There'll be all forty-plus departments will come and either department heads or management office heads that oversee these departments will give presentations about their department and the budget, specific asks, specific needs. It is quite a process, and it's a very heavy lift. So I, I want to thank the staff and all these department leadership teams in advance. But I want to, I'm going to ask that the community engages this process. We'll be live streaming these budget hearings through Facebook and YouTube. So they'll be live at the moment where you can see all the conversations happening in the room. But there is a lot of, a lot of needs, a lot of desires, and a lot of decisions to be made. So we start that this afternoon, and we'll continue for the next week. Second thing on other is I want to let everybody know that the National Prayer Breakfast is tomorrow morning at Century Two. Doors open at six-thirty AM, and the program will begin at seven AM and go to about eight-twenty. So I'd love to invite everyone over. This is the National Day of Prayer. We have the Wichita Prayer Breakfast tomorrow morning. I'm emceeing that event, and we have some people that are in town to help speak, and it should be a wonderful event, as it always is. So I want to encourage everybody to come out tomorrow morning to Century Two. Anything else under other? Okay, next item, please.
Executive session.
We do have an executive session. Commissioner Lopez.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for thirty minutes until twelve fifty-five for preliminary discussion related to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for the use by county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at twelve fifty-five.
Okay. That's a motion. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we will break till twelve fifty-five. So see you then. So see you then.
You tell us when we're on?
Okay, commissioners, we just returned from executive session. There was no binding action taken. Anything else we need to talk about here at the B OCC?
I have no questions. We believe that.
We are good to go. Budget hearings start here in 30 minutes. This meeting is adjourned.